One minute till broadcast. We are now streaming 30 seconds till title sequence.
Okay. Just let me know. Okay. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Happy Thursday. We would like to call the Durham City Council Work Session to order for this, the, for today's day, the 18th day of May 2023 here at 1:00 p.m. in City Hall Plaza. We welcome those who are joining us in person today. We have a nice audience today, and we also welcome those who are joining us remotely as well. Madam Clerk, if you will please call the role.
Mayor O'Neal.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Holsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now recognize my colleagues for any announcements that they may have. Looking first to my left. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to shout out again, I kind of spoke over it last, earlier this week, but I had the honor of visiting the Swing Pals program at Lowes Grove. And first thing came to mind is so much more than golf, but this is where they take sixth grade boys and girls, teach them how to just, it's really social, social emotional learning. I talked a lot about Sidekicks Academy and how successful they are at that. There are a few programs in the city that are focusing on this, and Swing Pals is another. So just wanted to highlight the great work that's happening over there. There are over 197 students that are playing golf after school over at Hillendale. They are starting during school, and then they continue voluntarily after school. And that's just a really good method to saving lives on our streets. So thank you guys for the work you're doing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And then turn to my right for announcements, starting with Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to share, being that it's Bike Month for May, Bike Durham actually held the annual Silent Ride or Ride of Silence. And I really had an emotional moment in trying to bring remarks, hearing the stories from Ms. Allison Simpson, Grace, and Grace Allor, and also, I don't want to say, I didn't catch Craig's last name, but in sharing that they lost a loved one in a bike accident that took their lives, it really hit home that this budget cycle, it's really impactful, losing our Budget Director in such a way. And just taking a moment to just thank my colleagues for bringing forward or supporting the items in the budget. I know that that's what Ms. Allison Simpson, I'm saying, Simpson shared at the bike rally, and I wanted to make sure I brought that back here. And then also just noting, I will be departing early at around 2:00, so I'll be here for an hour. And so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Freeman. Attorney. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good afternoon, ma'am, to my honorable colleagues, everyone in the chamber, and those watching wherever you may be. Good to be with you. Firstly, very briefly, happy Older Americans Month to all those that celebrate. I hope all of us are trying to aspire to celebrate it. Madam Mayor, I was at the Durham Center for Senior Life, one of my favorite places in the city, earlier today, and to recognize and celebrate Older Americans Month with the National Caucus and Center for Black Aging, Inc., and our wonderful vibrant older Americans that use that center and had an opportunity to bring greetings. They charged me to say hello to you, Madam Mayor, and to all of our colleagues here on the council, and had opportunity to read the Governor's Resolution for Older Americans Month as well. So shout out to all of our friends at the Center for Senior Life today. It's also Mental Health Awareness Month, and Age in America Pacific Islander Month. It's also Jewish American Heritage Month. And this morning, Her Honor and I had opportunity to meet with a representative of the Anti-Defamation League, a regional representative of the Anti-Defamation League, and a representative leader in our Jewish community here in Durham as well. Many of us are aware of the reports of the rise of anti-Semitic incidents around our country, and we have not been exempt or insulated from it here in Durham as well. We had a very robust conversation about some of the concerns of our neighbors and friends in our Jewish community, not just affecting them, but hate of all forms affecting all people. With the mayor's permission, and after that conversation, I wanted to alert my colleagues that I'll be bringing forth, in addition to the hip-hop resolution, a resolution will be brought forth, for us to consider adopting the IHRA, the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance's definition of antisemitism, and to join with other American cities and institutions around the country that have gone public in their declaration of their stand against antisemitism. The language will be crafted to be contoured for Durham. It will not just be boilerplate, but I did want to alert my colleagues that will be going forward. The last time we had an official declaration in this area was a couple of years ago. It was the, our resolution against white supremacy, Islamophobia, and antisemitism. I remember it well because I wrote that document. So it's been a couple of years since our city has officially given voice to this issue, and we will, I hope with the, and the unanimous, I hope with the unanimous vote of this constitution of this council, give voice again to Durham's stand against antisemitism as a freestanding resolution in the coming weeks. So that's all I wanted to say with respect to announcements. Again, good to be with you, and I thank my colleagues for the time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We did have a great conversation with the rabbi and the representative from the ADL this afternoon, so I look forward to that resolution being presented to this body and hopefully going out across the city. I too want to lift up Mr. Allor's daughter on yesterday at the bike ride. It was a very emotionally taxing time for her, and we just want to lift her up today and let her know that her, she will never be forgotten, and neither will her dead. So I also want to make a couple of quick announcements. One, I had an opportunity to deal, to go out to our water management. Some of our facilities with Director Don Greeley, I met a lot of great people, spent about five or six hours just learning and seeing how our water is cleaned. There's a lot of infrastructure that's hidden behind city gates, and I just want to give a shout out to them. I was so impressed with all that they're doing in treating our water and how that process works, that I'm going out there and spent a full day with them to go and see some other areas, but I just wanted to let you know that there are people who are working on making sure that we have clean water every second of every day. And so they are really, in my opinion, I told them on yesterday, they are the givers of life. They are the backbone of any city. Without clean water, it's a no-go for any human. So we thank them, and I look forward to going back out to visiting with them again, and encourage my colleagues who have not had that tour or that opportunity to do the same. I also wanted to let you know that on Wednesday, May 24, we do have a budget session that will begin at 9:00. I may be late, Mayor Pro Tem, and I may be, and will be leaving early. Both of those are for personal reasons. One will be for a personal appointment, and then the other, I'd like to give a shout out to my great nephew, Joel Tanner, who will be graduating next week. His grandfather, my oldest brother, has been in the hospital for a while, and he still remains in the hospital, and so we're going to go, we are planning to show up and force to support Joel. So go Joel, you know your auntie loves you, and I will be in place for that day. So with that being said, we will now turn to our priority items by our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the Durham City Council. I do have three priority items for your consideration this afternoon. Agenda item number 21, which is the 2023 First Quarter Crime Report. This item will include a 20-minute presentation. Agenda item number 28, Comprehensive Participation Agreement for the Implementation of the Durham County Transit Plan, the Durham County Transit Comprehensive Participation Agreement, Attachment Number Two, was added. And Agenda Item Number 33, the Carver Creek Supportive Housing Acquisition. Attachments numbers six through 14 have been added to your package, and that presentation is expected to be 30 minutes. Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you, City Manager Page. You have now heard the manager's priority items. I am now ready to entertain a motion for their approval.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Caballero. All those in favor, if you would sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, the ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. I now turn to recognize not our city attorney, but one who is very capable in her place.
Thank you very much. Yes, Deputy City Attorney Fred Lamar. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the City Council. There are no priority items from the city attorney's office today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Lamar. And we thank you for you standing in for our city attorney today. I now turn my attention to our very able clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. The city clerk's office has no priority items today.
Thank you so much. We now move to our second of order of business, and I will be reading the Administrative Consent Agenda as with items, as well as all of the remainder of the agenda for this afternoon. I will note that we will entertain, when we get to the presentations part, we will entertain the two presentations that involve external folk. We will entertain you first, okay? Thank you. Number one, the Citizens Advisory Committee Appointments. Item two, the Workforce Development Board Appointment. Three, Durham Open Space and Trails Commission Appointments. Item four.
Madam Mayor, when we get to item four, I didn't see that one on my ballot this morning, the EAB one, but I maybe missed it.
I think it was adjusted and resent. Is that not correct?
I missed that. Sorry.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, you're absolutely right, Madam Mayor. The EAB ballot was skipped, and it was included later around 10:30 this morning.
I think you had already submitted my ballot by that point. Thank you.
And thank you for mentioning.
Thank you. Now, I don't know whether I filled it out, but I know you sent the email. Thank you. Item five, Human Relations Commission Appointment. Item six, the Durham Sports Commission Appointment. Number seven, the Durham Cultural Advisory Board Appointment. Number eight, the April 2023 Bid Report. Item nine, as we move into our departmental items, the Disciplinary Actions Process Performance Audit, April 2023. Item 10, the Amendment to the FY 2022/23 Budget. Item 11, the Charter Amendment Renaming Triangle J Council of Governments to Central Pines Regional Council.
Madam Mayor, I didn't want to pull it. I did want to thank Ms. Wallace for getting that on the agenda today.
Thank you. Item 12, Ameri National, Ameri National Community Services LLC, Durham Business says, Ameri Nat, for Affordable Housing Loan Portfolio Servicing Contract.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull that, please.
Thank you. Item 13, the Second Amendment to the Contract with Housing for New Hope to Serve as the Unsheltered Coordinating Agency.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull that.
Thank you. Item 14, the Annual Insurance Plan FY 24. Fifteen, Construction Contract with DW Ward Construction Company, Inc., for the Morgan Rigsby Parking Garage Suite 103 Tenant Upfit. Sixteen, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Volkswagen Settlement Fast Charger Replacement Grant Project Ordinance and Financial Assistance Agreement. Seventeen, Fellowship Placement Agreement between the City of Durham and Fuse FUSE Corp. for Design Equitable Strategies for Vehicle Electrification. Eighteen, Construction Contract with Eagle Solar and Light LLC for Design and Installation of Photovoltaic Electrical Generation Systems at Water Management Miss Lake Facility. Nineteen, the Change Order Number One to the Construction Contract with Barr Construction Company, Inc., for the Athletic Court Renovations Pineywood Park Pickleball Project. Item twenty, Request for Qualifications for Redevelopment of 505 West Chapel Hill Street.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull that, please.
Thank you. Item twenty-one, Contract Agreement with M-Cubed and Company Global LLC to Provide Economic Development Consulting Services to Create a Business Registry and Legacy Program. Twenty-two, the 2023 First Quarter Crime Report. Twenty-three, Duke Blanket Stormwater Control Measure Easement Agreement. Twenty-four, Construction Contract with Prism Contractors, Inc., for Trenchless Pipe Repairs SD-2023-03 and Stormwater Capital Improvement Project Ordinance Amendment. Item twenty-five, the Contract with WM Recycle America LLC for Recycling Processing and Marketing of recyclable, recyclable materials. Item twenty-six, the First Amendment to the Contract with Lexair Electronic Steel Corporation for Completion of Last Mile Fiber Construction. Number twenty-seven, the First Amendment to the Contract with GNS Communications and Technical Services, Inc., for Completion of Last Mile Fiber Construction. Twenty-eight, the Comprehensive Participation Agreement for the Implementation of the Durham County Transit Plan. Item twenty-nine, the Memorandum of Agreement for the Western Intake Partnership, Amendment Number Two. Item thirty, Change Order Number Two with TA Loving Company for Construction of the South Durham Water Reclamation Facility Process Improvements Phase Two Project. Item thirty-one, the Water Professional Engineering Services Contract with Brown and Caldwell, Inc., for the Forest Hill Park Sewer Improvements Project. Number thirty-two, Change Order Number Two, Brady Integrated Security, Inc., for the Site and Building Security System at the Department of Water Management Facility Complex Phase Two. Turning now to our presentations. Item thirty-three, Carver Creek Supportive Housing Acquisition. Thirty-four, FY 2022/23 Third Quarter Financial Report. Item thirty-five, this is the Downtown Durham Municipal Services, Service District Annual Report, our public hearings. Item thirty-six, public hearing for the City Manager's Proposed Fiscal Year 2023/2024 Budget and Fiscal Year 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Plan. Thirty-seven, the Consolidated Annexation for 18 Clayton Road. Thirty-eight is the Consolidated Annexation L Parcel. Thirty-nine, Consolidated Zoning Map Change Streets at South Point Mall, Number Two. And item forty, Public Hearing and Economic Develop Incentive Agreement with Eagle Landing Partners LLC.
Madam Mayor, I forgot to pull it, but I also have some questions about item number nine.
Say the name, I'm sorry.
Item number nine, I forgot to pull it, or to ask to get it pulled.
You would like that, for that to be pulled as well?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right, Madam Manager, I have pulled item nine, item twelve, item thirteen, item twenty. Is that correct?
So have I.
All right. Thank you so much. And then we will have our presentations sort of out of order according to the calendar. All right, we now turn to our citizen matters, and we have, we will take our citizens in person first. If you would speak to us for three minutes apiece. We have first up is Ms. Sandy Metz, second Erica Maddox, third Leah Bergman, four Gujron Palmer, Palmer, number five Sheldon Mitchell. If you would just state your name, you have three minutes, and glad to have you with us today.
Hi, I'm Sandy Metz. I was here two weeks ago, and I was with the pickleball people, and we were all in despair about the construction problems at Pineywood Court. And somehow between now and then, a miracle has occurred, and paperwork has been done, and money has been found, and it's, General Services wrote a bunch of stuff, and now it's an Agenda Item 19 today to get it funded. So I just wanted to come and thank you guys. I don't know who did this, but every pickleball player in Durham appreciates it. I hope once we get a grand opening in the fall, I hope you'll support the funding, and when we have the big grand opening in the fall, I want to see you guys all out there. We'll teach you to play pickleball. It's going to be a big party. Thank you.
I'm going to ask the city manager, even though it's out of order, to kind of speak to that. Go ahead, the city manager. But we appreciate you, Ms.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. Thank you for your voice. I just wanted to say that the Departments of General Services and Parks and Recreation are constantly working to make sure that our facilities that we have are properly maintained and upgraded as our budget and our CIP has been set in order to do. So we, we always appreciate our advocates, but it's not a miracle. This is what we do. This is what we do on a day, on a day-to-day basis, and we are very happy that the individuals in our community are going to have these newly refurbished pickleball courts.
Thank you so much. Ms. Maddox, Erica Maddox, followed by Ms. Bergman, Ms. Palmer, and Sheldon Mitchell, in that order.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of City Council. My name is Leah Bergman. I'm just here to make some comments today on the Agenda Item 33 that you'll be considering later on. I've been heavily involved in ending homelessness and expanding affordable housing in Durham for over 10 years. In the last five to seven years, I have been involved with the City of the Durham and Durham Continuum of Care Initiative, commonly referred to as COC. Prior to COVID, we, COC and housing providers, held monthly meetings where we strategized and implemented new ideas around greater acceptance of housing choice vouchers in Durham, housing provider engagement, and how to house Durham's chronically homeless, defined by HUD as unsheltered for greater than a year. I personally have tried over the last five years to house those who have been unsheltered the longest, and I am disappointed to report to you all that I've not had tremendous success. Partially, the lack of success is due to the lack of ongoing support services, that those who have been unsheltered the longest need to ensure long-term success and stability. I believe, based on my firsthand experience, that Durham desperately needs more supportive housing units to have greater success in housing those chronically homeless and those with the highest barriers to housing. I am formally asking the City of Durham, as I formally asked Durham County Commissioners, to fund the purpose of Carver Creek. And this will not only preserve the existing affordable housing, but support this much-needed expansion of supportive housing in our community. If you are able to support this initiative, it will create 48 affordable supportive housing units to me, and most importantly to me, create the Carver Creek Campus and begin the bold vision to create a transformative supportive housing campus, which, when fully operational, would provide 100 to 100 units of deeply affordable housing with integrative onsite services. This campus would be unique to Durham. However, there are other major cities that have had tremendous success that I have personally visited in creating central locations for serving the needs of these populations. Benefits of the campus include those, include many, but most importantly to me, are clinicians, peer support, and other supportive professionals at a centralized location to see clients, and thus conserve more in the community and have a more pronounced impact. Thank you very much for your time, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman. Ms. Maddox.
Hello, and good afternoon, Mayor O'Neal and Durham City Council members. My name is Erica Maddox, Board Chair for Housing for New Hope. It is a wonderful opportunity to have this opportunity to make this request for your assistance in the acquisition and preservation of Carver Creek Apartments. This is such a, an important role, important and vital move in the right direction in sustaining what we already have available to us and creating additional supportive housing coupled with a supportive services campus, as well as preventing the eviction and displacement of the current residents if this property is purchased by a private developer, which will also add to the number of homeless, homeless individuals within our community, as we saw, would only increase the percentage to, to over 158, what the point-in-time count showed the results of. The supportive services campus will provide easier access for our most vulnerable residents to receive the help that they need to live and thrive on a day-to-day basis. Housing is not just a luxury that one hopes to simply obtain, but it is a right and basic necessity for any human being. With the rising cost of housing, as well as any other basic need attached to the slow rise of income, it continues to be increasingly difficult to access some of the basic needs of life, and this should not be the case. We have the opportunity here within Carver Creek Apartments to help our Durham residents experiencing homelessness and various challenges, access affordable housing and supportive services such as employment training, benefit navigation, mental and physical health services, as well as substance abuse assistance. This project will have a significantly positive impact on Durham and has the full backing of the Housing for New Hope Board. We hope you will join us on this journey to end homelessness within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox, Ms. Palmer. As you are coming forth, I'd like to take this opportunity, I think this may be your last time coming to see us.
Yes.
As a county employee.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations on retirement, and thank you for a job well done in servicing not only Durham County, but all of the residents and la, many lives that you've touched over this city. We've known each other a long time. I just hope that you can learn to stay retired, like, unlike some of us who have retired twice. So congratulations. Thanks, Gujron. Job well done.
Thank you so much for the kind words, Madam Mayor. We've got, we do go back a long ways, 25 and a half years you were on the bench when I came to Durham, so thank you. I really appreciate it. Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, I'm here for a very selfish reason. I am excited about the Carver Creek project because I believe it will also support the work that we do at the Criminal Justice Resource Center. We have a number, housing has become one of the primary services and resources that our clients need when they come to us for assistance. And you may know that we do reentry work, but we also work with individuals in the detention center and in the court system. Lots, a lot of clients that we see have very complex needs and, and multiple issues, mental health needs, and coupled with substance use disorders. And they are, and some of them might have benefits, and some might be, we might be able to connect to benefits while we work with them. But if you, if, if we get a client from incarceration after 40 years, that person cannot live alone. That person doesn't know how to live in the community on their own. While our agency is, is prepared to provide temporary housing, and we have, thanks to you, some funding to provide more longer-term housing assistance, people need that supportive housing component, and that is very, very difficult for us, for our clients to access. So we are really excited about Carver Creek, and we have great hope. So we are really excited about Carver Creek and we have great hopes that this will also serve our clients and our justice-involved people, people with long records, people with complex needs and that we can connect. And, and hopefully, then they can move on, right? Carver Creek may not be their last housing, and they may not be there forever. And the, the plan is, they go there, they learn how to live, they, they get the supportive services where they are, and then we can move them into more independent housing. So we are excited, this is a very important component in the continuum, and we really appreciate your support and we hope you will look at this very favorably. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mitchell?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council members. My name is Sheldon Mitchell. I'm the Executive Director of Urban Ministries of Durham and come today to speak on behalf or in support of the acquisition of the Carver Creek property by Housing for New Hope. So at Urban Ministries of Durham, we are working with the unhoused each and every day. We say that we are connecting with others in the community to end homelessness and fight poverty by offering food, shelter, and a future. And one of the primary focuses of people having a better future is for us to help them get into housing. We primarily do that by working with individuals through our case management team, but also through our partners, of which Housing for New Hope has been a longstanding partner and very collaborative partner with us in, in this effort. So we are definitely excited about the opportunity that their acquisition of the Carver Creek property has. One of the things that we have seen, though, that this part of our mission has become much more challenging because of the fact of less affordable housing that's available, that's also created longer lengths of stay for those who enter into the emergency shelter. So we see this as an opportunity, hopefully, to keep that pipeline flowing. We have had the fortune, since this is currently a resourcing community for many of our former residents, to be able to find and secure housing at the property. So we definitely feel like it's going to be a benefit to the community, especially our residents, to be able to maintain it as an affordable option within community. We want to continue to support this population. We feel like the opportunity for expansion at the site, along with the supportive services piece, would be key to individuals being able to be stable long-term. But overall, we see the community developing and growing in many ways, and we feel like this is gonna be a great option and opportunity for the community to serve some of our most vulnerable, as we think about our unhoused citizens, but also those with lower incomes and more challenge in, going forward in the future. So I would like to, again, just express our support as an organization and as a partner for the project and for Housing for New Hope.
Thank you so much. Mr. Jeremy Bergreen, followed by Brianna Van Velsen, Michelle Schaefer, Rick Larson, and Mr. James Chavis. Those would be the last cards that I have for persons who are in chambers. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Jeremy Bergren. I'm here today with CAN and to support the Carver Creek purchase. My involvement in CAN also is through Monument of Faith Church, and my connection to Monument of Faith is actually through gun violence. So I see kind of these issues of housing and gun violence really related. Part of what brought me here is my own situation, in that years ago, community members and the mayor and the city council all advocated for housing for low-income and disabled veterans. And that's why I am a low-income and disabled veteran. A couple months ago, I was at a community meeting in Southside, and one of the elder residents found out where I lived, and she said, "Oh, Brother Ray really fought for those houses." And Brother Ray died after COVID started, but when Keddie from CAN brought this up to me, I thought of Brother Ray and how probably even 10 years ago, he was speaking up for someone he didn't know and someone that needed to get out of homelessness. Since living in Durham in 2010, I have experienced homelessness, being disabled, chronic underemployment, years without health care. I have a pretty good life now, even with social security, but the biggest factor is that I live in affordable housing and I've been able to access mental health services the last five or six years, specifically, I'm on disability for trauma-related disorders. If I wasn't a veteran and if I wasn't white, I would still be on the street. I wouldn't be able to access care and I would be dealing with other compounding issues of racism that would lead me to not be housed. And I'm surrounded by elder people, predominantly elder black women. And so part of me speaking up on this is that I'm really a young white dude and a lot of times the only person in affordable housing that's white. And so mostly, this is really about having a, a place to live for non-white people and dealing with sort of like the anti-blackness and racism that goes on with the policies. I continue to help homeless people and mentally, people with mental illnesses, they come to my house. I've been helping out a chronically homeless brother for the last six years. Sometimes I wake up, he's on the porch and he's been beat up. He's 59. He's been in and out of prison. He helps out other homeless people. I have two other brothers that are in their 30s that come to me. Sometimes they just need a hug, but sometimes they need medication. And even trying to get into alliance, there's still people falling through the gaps. So I really feel like this Carver Creek acquisition will help folks that are still falling through the crack, but also prevent others from becoming homeless, like was my case. So thank you.
Ms. Brianna Van Velsen.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. I'm coming before you today as the Executive Director of Durham Congregations in Action. I represent over 57 faith communities, and we all support affordable housing. We believe that Housing for New Hope is good for this job. We believe they can do it, they have proven over and over again their dedication to affordable housing and ending homelessness here in Durham and their ability to do so. Most of all, I've met with several of you personally over the past 10 years that I have lived in this city and learned a lot about my civic duty as a citizen, and several of you at some point or other have expressed that you didn't want affordable housing to just be downtown. I'm asking you to support your intent. This is an excellent opportunity, sorry, over five acres of not just helping with green space, but to keep people in their homes in a part of Durham where people are, had been pushed to and are now being pushed out. I don't want to see, as a resident of that area of Durham, I also don't want to see my neighbors pushed out and being replaced by more cube storage or luxury apartments or warehouses or even a medical center. I would, I would like to see them housed, which is what they need. And our organization firmly believes that the City Council should also support affordable housing wherever we can here in Durham. I also appreciate as a leader, a faith leader, that Housing for New Hope ensures the dignity and respect for all people in their necessary work and that they have the capacity to pull this off. My office is across the hall from Housing for New Hope's street outreach team, so I see every single day how Housing for New Hope treats people who come into their doors and how they go out and reach out to people in the streets. I think that Housing for New Hope has the support of several organizations that will help complete the wraparound services that folks need. I live across the street from Dunson Apartments. I've seen what permanent supportive housing and wraparound services can do with my own eyes, and I really, I really think that this is an initiative that would be excellent for our city and would take advantage of resources and strengths that we already have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Schaefer, followed by Rick Larson and James Chavis.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager Page, and City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you regarding the correction of Durham firefighters' pay compression from the perspective of firefighter's wife. On Monday night, you heard testimony from a few members of the Durham Fire Department on the concerns of pay compression and the need for corrective action to be taken. In the days since, I'm sure you have received more information from local 668 regarding detailed numbers and informative facts. The current pay compression issue not only affects our city's safety by losing valuable first responders to surrounding departments, but our beloved firefighters and their families. Today, I would like to shine light on how the pay compression issue has emotional and mental effects on our firefighters and their families. On Monday night, Darius Thompson made a moving speech about how picking up extra overtime shifts affects his baby boy. His words had me holding back tears as I know the pain that many firefighters' families feel. Like most Durham firefighters, my husband Benjamin Schaefer does part-time work on top of his full-time job with the Durham Fire Department. While it is in fire culture for firefighters to have side jobs because of their schedules, my husband does not work extra because of a passion for a trade. He works additional part-time work so that I can live in the city of Durham. We are one of the very few Durham firefighter families that lives within city limits. Growing up outside Washington DC, living in the city is in my nature. I did not want to move out to Bahama, Hurdle Mills, or Rouge Mount like many of our Durham firefighters do. I feel at home here in Durham, and I have ever since we moved here back in June of 2012. We currently own a three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,500-square-foot townhouse in South Durham. We purchased our home in 2019 at $189,000. As of today, there were only two homes in the city of Durham for sale under $190,000. They both are two bedrooms, one bath, under 1,000 square feet, and in very poor condition. Currently, our mortgage is $1,194.11. We have refinanced once since purchasing. After deductions of taxes, retirement, pension, and healthcare and life insurance, Ben's monthly take-home pay from the Durham Fire Department is $2,760.94. Without any other income, our mortgage would be 43% of his take-home pay. The standard recommendation for banking officials is that your housing cost is not more than 28% of your take-home income. In order to allow me to keep living within Durham city limits and enjoying in the prosperity of Durham, Ben has had a minimum of three jobs ever since he graduated the Fire Academy in January of 2013. My husband currently works four jobs. Ben works full-time for the Durham Fire Department, part-time for Durham 911 Communications, part-time doing tree work for retired, for a retired Durham firefighter, and has a landscaping property he manages. In one month, Ben works, on average, the following hours for his four jobs: 240 hours for the Fire Department, 48 hours for Durham 911 Communication, 32 hours in tree work, and 20 hours on his landscaping property. This does not include any overtime shifts he picks up for the Durham Fire Department. To put this in perspective, the average full-time city employee works 160 hours a month, equating to 40 hours per week. My husband, on average, works 340 hours a month, equating to 85 hours per week. I do not see my husband a lot, and I have grown to accept that and learn to enjoy my alone time and treasure the time we do have together. Firefighters already have a very high divorce rate because of their shift work schedule. Now imagine adding additional jobs on top of that in order to give your family the life they feel that they deserve. Our only saving grace is that we do not have children. I feel so much pain for the Durham firefighters trying to raise families and for their wives who are having to be single mothers without actually being a single mother. Being a firewife is not for the weak. Let me clarify, this fight is not about becoming wealthy. This fight is about our.
Schaefer?
Yeah.
Give you about 10 more seconds.
Okay.
Time was about a minute ago.
Okay, I'll do this one paragraph. Ben has been with the Durham Fire Department since June of 2012. His current role is driver. Between his years of service and when he was promoted as driver, he should be at driver six pay level. He is currently at driver two. Driver two pay is $58,145. Driver six is $70,675. That is a difference of $12,530 per year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson, followed by Mr. Chavis. You will each have three minutes apiece. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Council members, my name is Rick Larson. I'm with, wow, I'm moved by that. From Duke Memorial, United Methodist Church, which is located at 504 West Chapel Hill Street, right across from the 505 West Chapel Hill Street property, which you're gonna be looking at on, on agenda item 20 today. Thanks for the opportunity to comment on that. We're very pleased to see the planning staff's recommendation for 80 units of affordable housing that you'll hear about from, from Stacy. However, we would like to challenge the, the city to do more. In conversations with affordable housing developers, our partners at the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit have heard that developers can make projects work at, with up to 20% of the units set aside as affordable. In addition, we've seen, as you all know, the developers are getting the message about the need for affordable housing in Durham. Two of the most recent requests to the Planning Commission have had 10% affordable units in, in them. So the, the word is getting out that the council, the city council and the city are serious about affordable housing. This leads our congregation to the conclusion that the council can and should be a leader and do more. We'd like to see you strongly encourage developers to include at least 20% affordable units permanently available at 60% on the 505 project. We have a housing crisis. This is city-owned land. You have the opportunity to set a higher standard. And for clarification, we support keeping the minimum requirement at 80 units. So this 20% requirement would only kick in if there was a development of more than 400 units altogether. One more thought, there has been feedback that, from our neighbors in the Willard Street apartment, down the street from our church, that they feel like they're on an island and a sea of people living in market-rate apartments. You probably have heard that, too. We hear them and we say, "Let's make the island bigger. Let's not abandon them." And better yet, let's build bridges to their immediate neighbors and their other, other neighborhoods like the West End. We'll do our part to reach out to them. Indeed, we have a highly successful relationship with Henderson Towers residents, and we've had that for many years. We want you to do your part, create a world-class, major affordable development at the 505 location, more than 80 units, please. This would be a fantastic way to build bridges for the Willard Street folks. And one more thought, we at Duke Memorial would like to consider building affordable housing on our property. Raleigh and Chapel Hill zoning laws permit that now, and houses of worship are doing it, building housing for their most needy residents. It's a simple and easy change to the UDO, literally one word. In Section 5.2.4H, take out the word "staff" in front of accessory dwelling unit in the current text. Done. It's the easiest thing you'll do all day. And for one more thought, we don't tell you enough that we appreciate you. Thank you for all you're doing on the council to address the gentrification happening in Durham, and we hope you'll consider adding this 20% component to Agenda Item 20 for the objectives of the 505 RFP. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chavis? Three minutes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. My name is James Chavis, 2813 Ash Street Apartment B. I come to speak on SCAD, Simplified Code for Affordable Development, not S-C-A-H. It's Simplified Code for Affordable Housing. There is a difference, and I wish you councilmen that don't understand H and D. Affordable development means for the what? And affordable H, meaning houses, is for who? There is two differences, and looking at that SCAD is not for us. And as I look back, and I've been looking back, I see one thing to say today to you all. We talk about Clarence Brown, who's a black man sitting on the Supreme Court, not doing his rights for the people, but are we talking about Harrell, who's sitting up there not doing her right as a Democrat for the Durham people? You see, we can throw stones across the road, but we won't throw stones at home. And that's what we need to do, because two wrongs don't make no right. One is wrong and the other one's. If you are doing wrong by helping your family to make money from these developers and your If you are doing wrong by helping your family to make money from these developers and your partner that's sitting on the other end, you are doing us injustice because you S-C-D, not S-C-H. So understand that, hey, this is just a beginning fight. But you must understand, he who lasts first shall not last last. And I hope I won't be the one to come and last in your face. Thank you.
We now turn to our speakers who are on the internet. Let me verify with our clerk. I believe those are all the persons I have here in person that would like to speak with us today. We have Laura Hoosery, followed by John Bonvecchio, followed by Jacqueline Wagstaff, who will speak to us via the internet. Laura Hoosery?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Hoosery is not in the queue.
She's not in the queue? All right. Thank you. We'll turn to John Bonvecchio. Sir, can you hear me?
Madam Mayor, I need to be made host of the meeting.
You need to be made host again? Okay, we'll get our technical folks to take a look at that.
Okay, I'm host.
Thank you. My name is John Bonvecchio, Madam Mayor, council members. I bring an issue that has arisen over the last five years. The city, I don't know.
I'm sorry, sir. If you could begin again, we lost you.
Oh, sorry. Oh, okay.
And we can hear you.
Great. About five years ago, the city installed a traffic circle on University and Hope Valley 751, which is wonderful. Thank you very much. An unintended consequence of this and the pandemic is Bexley Avenue serves as a thoroughfare connecting university estates in the Prestonwood community, and many families walk their children to Hope Valley Elementary. There's a walking path behind the school off of Ithaca Street. And during certain parts of the day, this becomes an issue because drivers now tend to be faster along 751, knowing that circle is there. And there can be 20 to 30 parents, children, either waiting for a bus, trying to cross the street. And it just seems like an ideal area to have a crosswalk installed in some manner to slow down traffic.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments today. We turn now to Jacqueline Wagstaff.
Can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I come to you again to speak on behalf of the firefighters and the first responders. Monday night was just an eye-opener for some people. But for some of us that stay abreast of how council vote and how they do business, some of us already knew that the compression pay and the situation with the first responders and the firefighters had not been resolved because we know the vote was taken in 2020. And fortunately, Madam Mayor, you weren't on the council at that point. And there were seven, there were six people that voted for the situation, and there was one that voted against because, thank you, Councilman Freeman, for voting against because you knew that this situation would not be resolved. Now, my suggestion to this council is, with the same quickness that you voted last year to give yourself a raise at the behest of Councilman Javier Caballero, who said, in her words, that she could not continue to do this job for that little bit of money that you were getting, you needed this raise. You voted on this raise, the raise was given to you within 30 days, and now we have these first responders that they are putting their life on the line to protect us. They have not been able to get what they needed so that they can live properly in Durham. And also, I have another suggestion. Why don't we take that participatory budget and money, that's almost $2 million, that's just a free-for-all that has been applied to, people have been applying for this money, there's no accountability of it. You get the money, you go on about your business, you don't come back and report, you're using taxpayer dollars. Let's take that money and add it to the compression fund so that we can pay our firefighters and our first responders. And then we also need to remember that there are certain council members on this council that do not support public safety. They've made it known when they voted against budgets in the past that had to do with law enforcement that's actually attached. They are first responders, too. So we have to be clear on how we got to this point. So I'm asking this council, which I'm pretty sure that there are at least four up here that's going to do what they want, like they always do, and approach, and make sure that our firefighters and our first responders get what they need. Because right now, it's a shame that a raise was given to this council, and our first responders, who y'all are not, have not got what they need and talking about they have to leave this city to even live at this point. So we must put our focus on the things that are relevant and stop dealing with crap that people have their own agendas up here, and they're funding it because they're sitting in power positions and they're being able to fund things. And then I also need the Mayor Pro Tem to just close his affiliation we can so that we make sure that when y'all take that vote on that affordable housing complex, that we know what his attachment is to it. Because I know that he has church members that spoke Monday night.
Ms. Wagstaff, your three minutes are up as well, ma'am. Thank you for speaking with us today. We now turn to our pooled items, and we will begin with-
Number nine.
Number nine. And I believe number nine was pulled by Councilwoman Caballero. That'll be followed by Item 12, pulled by Mayor Pro Tem. Item 13, also pulled by Councilwoman Caballero. We also have a speaker. I think Ms. Wagstaff has signed up to speak on that matter. And then we will follow that with Item Number 20, which was pulled by Mayor Pro Tem, and we'll take those in that order. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, council members, Madam Manager. I'm Jermaine Bruington, Director of the Artist Services Department.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I appreciated the report. I just had a couple of quick questions. Do you think that, you know, the, I guess, Page 9, where it shows the chart with the pretty large drop-off of reprimands between 2022, F-year 2022 and current year, do you think that has anything to do with our current vacancy rate? Part of the reason that the numbers have dropped is because overall, we just have significantly less employees?
I would say, we do have the Human Resources Director here, but I would say, yes, that does have some contributing factor to that downward drop.
Thank you. And then my second question is, I really appreciated all the recommendations. I thought they were stellar. I appreciated the equity lens that's going to be applied to our employees. I thought that that was, you know, it just shows that the work that we do internally around equity is just as important as the work we do out in the community. And so are we going to get kind of a report in a few months' time when we get one of these recommendations? Because I know that there's several that are getting implemented over several months. And so I would love to get an update once they have been implemented to see some of the, hopefully, better outcomes.
The Human Resources Director has indicated that they will report to the city manager, and at that time, that information will be distributed as the city manager and the exec team deem appropriate.
Thank you. And then one last question, and I can't remember. It was the part around, like, right now, people's, if they have something written up in their file, it's, it lasts up to three years, and they have to request to get it removed, but it's going to be automatically removed. But there may be some conversation around even, like, lowering the amount of time. And so just curious as to when or how staff is thinking. Because just from my perspective, I could see three years being really long for folks. So just curious about that.
I think I need to, I would like to let the Human Resource Director answer that question, please.
Bring this down just a smidge. Good afternoon. My name is Robyn Nguyen, and I'm the Human Resources Director. In response to your question, three years has been, by policy, under the direction of the city manager, we will adjust accordingly. And at that time, we don't destroy the documents, they just are inactive at that time.
Perfect. Thank you. And then is there the opportunity to go for less? Like, I know the policy's three years, but I thought I read in the memo that there may be consideration of lowering the amount of time from not three years?
Yes, we are posing that as one of our recommendations.
Perfect. I appreciate it. I really appreciated the report. I know you all are working hard to improve some of our policies so that we can really recruit and retain the best.
I am, Mayor Pro Tem, if you will allow me a point. I just received a text from, we have another person, Mr. Dewan Langley, who had signed up to speak on a citizen matter, but was actually registered for Item Number 22. I'm going to try to go ahead and accommodate him at this time. Mr. Dewan Langley, if you are available, you have three minutes, sir, to speak on as a citizen.
Thank you so very much, Madam Mayor, for accommodating me. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and members of the Durham City Council. I come before you with a request for an investment of $250,000 for the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, as you all are aware. We have had unprecedented issues around boys and young men of color in our community, and one of which was stated by our police chief, as you all are slated to receive a crime report today. Last November, she said, between the ages of 16 and 24, if you are a young black male, and we're just talking about here in Durham, you are either going to be a victim or a suspect. There is an opportunity for us to change that narrative. And in requesting this $250,000 for career exploration and development programming that will provide the career and skill-focused mentoring boys and young men of color in Durham could greatly benefit from. As you all may be aware, this population is disproportionately represented in areas such as low academic proficiency, college and career readiness, short and long-term, suspensions, dropout rates, acceptance to college, life-sustaining career opportunities, perpetrators and victims of gun violence, juvenile petitions and representation in the Durham County Detention Facility. Our program seeks to address these disparities by providing the necessary support so that young men can change the trajectory of their life through skill-focused mentoring, academic enrichment, and leadership development. Most recently, we had one of our fifth-year scholars who started with us five years ago when the organization was founded to become Vice President at Bank of America. If that is not transformation or change in the life of a young man of color, I don't know what is. With your investment, we plan to expand our reach to a larger number of participants, provide additional resources by programmatic activities, and build capacity to ensure our program's long-term sustainability. As you all are aware, this is an effort that I've undertaken for the past six years voluntarily. Through our programming, we aim to equip more than young men of color with the skills, resources, and support in order to capitalize on the renaissance that we are seeing in workforce development and economic opportunity in our community. Your investment will help us make a significant impact in the lives of these boys and young men in the broader Durham community. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, two years ago, we stood on the steps of the Hayti Heritage Center, and you said that we don't need permission to save our lives. What I'm asking for today is permission of an investment to provide the resources we need to save the lives of the boys and young men of color in this community, as well as Councilmember Williams, who was also present that day. So all of you all have an opportunity to help support something that has been making transformational impact in our community, and I hope you all will consider it as you all work through your budget.
Thank you, Mr. Langley. I know it's difficult for you all to hear the buzzer, but we thank you for your comments today. We now return to our, back to our pooled items, Mayor Pro Tem. Item Number 12, which is the, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to pronounce it.
Ameri National Community Services LLC. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you.
Reginald Johnson, Director, Community Development Department. Greetings, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council.
Good afternoon, Mr. Johnson. Good to see you.
Likewise.
Very quickly, no real controversy here. Who is currently servicing our portfolio?
Amerinat is currently serving our portfolio, and it have been for the past 18 years.
That's what I thought. So this couldn't have been framed as just an extent, they had to go through the whole RFP process over again, and we came back?
Oh, yes, sir.
The same people?
Yes, sir. We do require, I think it's every three years, every four years, we have to reissue and our request for proposals for those services.
And it's been the same person, it's been the same group each time, right?
Yes.
How many, how many outfits or interests did we hear from before we chose them again?
In this particular round, it was just Ameri National submitted.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you both. We now turn to Item Number 13, Second Amendment to the Contract with Housing for New Hope to Serve as the Unsheltered Coordinating Agency. It's been pulled by Councilwoman Caballero, and we do have one speaker via the internet. Ms. Jacqueline Wagstaff has requested to speak on this item as well. Councilwoman Caballero, turn it over to you, and we'll hear from Ms. Wagstaff after that.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Just real quick, why didn't we receive any of the HUD special no-fo, which is close to something else, funds?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager Paige, Council. Colin Davis, Manager of the Homeless System and Community Development Department. Great question, Councilwoman Caballero. We did not receive special no-fo funding due to, it was a limited pool of money that had to be spread across the country. And we in Durham, depending on how you want to look at it, we were either fortunate enough to not qualify for 30 bonus points, or we were unfortunate that we didn't. But to qualify for 30 bonus points to get us to that 100-point score, we had to have over 10,000 people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. And we, fortunately, in Durham, are not having 10,000 people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. So we started at a deficit of 30 points. Our debriefing also showed that we need to increase our tie-ins with the medical providers in the community. And we did have a lot of MOUs and discussion of that, we think HUD didn't read the application as well as we had hoped.
Thank you. I actually appreciate that. And for once, I'm glad we didn't get those 30 bonus points, because that's a massive population to have to shelter. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Wagstaff? You've signed up.
Yes, Madam-
You're ready.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I signed up for this because I had a couple of questions of concern. I see where the staff is asking for a $430,000 increase to the contract. I'm curious to know, what does this million-plus dollars give, give the taxpayers as it relates to this unsheltered coordinating agency? And how long have they had this contract? And what was the previous amount? And does the Housing for New Hope, I understand what their model is, and unfortunately, I support them, but I do understand that their model is more geared to chronically homeless people, people in addiction, and people in mental health. But we have people that are just experiencing housing insecurity that don't qualify in any of those categories. So they would not qualify to be a part of Housing for New Hope. So I'm curious to know, how much money has the previous contracts been with this organization? Do they put this out as a RFP when this contract is up each year? Or do they just automatically renew this contract? Because I'm curious to know, what are we paying a million dollars for? I would like to know, is there a report somewhere that can tell us what they do for this million-plus dollars? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis, if you would respond, please. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to do my best to remember. There are multiple questions in there, so if I miss something, please help me. The original contract began in 2020. There was a delay in getting started due to COVID and due to some leftover money that Alliance had funded. So the contract was late getting started. The contract was originally for two and a half years. Due to the late start, the contract sort of moved into about a three-year time period. And we, on the upswing of hiring staff, COVID downturn of staffing, we extended- and we, on the upswing of hiring staff, COVID downturn of staffing, we extended the contract to spend out the original two and a half years that took about three years to spend. Our plan as a community was to have HUD pay for the street outreach services that the Unsheltered Coordinating Agency does. However, we were unable to get those funds from HUD, and due to other pressures on us, we were unable to get a second RFP out the door in time to be able to ensure we had a continuity of services. And that's why we are asking to extend the contract for one year and add $430,000 to the contract. As the contract is budgeted at $430,000 per year, 50% of those funds are paid for by the city, 50% of the funds are paid for by the county through an inter-local agreement. And question in terms of what have we gotten? I pulled some data, if you give me a moment, for the fiscal year that will end June 30th. So, so far, this Unsheltered Coordinating Agency this year has worked with 359 different people who are unsheltered in Durham since July 1st of 2022. 98 of those people were children under the age of 18. 136 of these individuals were male, adult males, 121 were adult females, one person stated they were no single gender. There were 50 males that were children, 47 female children. 72 participants identified as white, 261 people identified as Black, African-American, or African. Five identified as American Indian, Alaska Native, or Indigenous. 15 identified as multiple races. 13 people that were served unsheltered were identified as Hispanic or Latina, Latino, or Latinx. 71 individuals who were unsheltered identified having a domestic violence history. 32 people identified as fleeing domestic violence that this street outreach group was able to work with. The average length of stay that, the average length of time that people receive services is about 100 days. 28.5% of the people who were served, when they exited the Unsheltered Coordinating Agency program, moved into permanent housing, went from unsheltered housing, unsheltered homelessness into permanent housing. So, that was 58 people exited to permanent housing because of this program. 61% of people served exited to what we consider a positive housing destination, which is either permanent housing or exiting unsheltered homelessness to an emergency shelter or something temporary that ended their unsheltered homelessness. 139 people were identified as chronically homeless. And in addition to serving unsheltered individuals and families who are unsheltered, the Unsheltered Coordinating Agency is also our primary response group to encampments in the city and county on public land. So, city and county-owned properties that have encampments, the Housing for New Hope's Unsheltered Coordinating Agency goes out and works with those who are in those encampments to try and get them cleaned up and try and engage folks in services to exit homelessness. I think that answers all the questions, or did I miss something?
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
We now turn to our last pull item, Mayor Protem. Item 20, Request for Qualifications for Redevelopment of 505 West Chapel Street.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Stacy Poston, City of Durham General Services Department. We also have in chambers HRNA advisors, our consultants to this project.
Good afternoon, Stacy. Good afternoon to all of you. Thank you so much. Clearly, one of, perhaps, one of the most consequential decisions this council will make before us, and I pulled it because, one, I just wanted to kind of do a "are we sure" to my colleagues, although this is not an RFP, it is Request for Qualifications, which will set the stage, you know, for the proposals that will follow this. And I looked back at the priorities again, and I had a quest, a couple of specific questions about some of the priorities, but I also wanted to just kind of prompt my colleagues, you know, to alert that, because in our last discussion, our last discussion was pretty free-ranging, and we talked about a number of things, and my sense was that we could have had another discussion, but, but we are at a point now where we're going to actually float qualifications. So, I just wanted to kind of prod my colleagues a little bit to take a look at this list and make sure we're ready to hit send or go on this. One of the questions I had for priorities, for number two, preserve the existing Milton Small Building with potential funding support from the city, subject to legal constraints. I seem to recollect us also talking about going after money based upon historical preservation from the feds and the state as well, not, I don't know if from the city is capturing that, but I just want to be certain that we're not just talking about funds from our coffers or from our checkbook, but all funds that may be available through grants by way of historical preservation as well. Do we need to communicate that to potential developers to query them as to whether or not they have the bandwidth or ability to go after federal money as well? I'm just wondering if this needs to be, or is that included in this, in this bullet? Or do we need to clarify that?
Thanks for that question. It makes a lot of sense. So, what we will see in the proposal stage and what will come in in the proposal stage is the developers' pro forma and assumptions, and you will see things like low-income tax credit assumptions at the 4% or 9%. You would also see assumptions around historic tax credits and the availability of those, and their intent to use those as a part of their proposed project proposals.
Fair enough. Will we, when we get to the proposal stage, it's not too late based upon these just requests for qualifications, it's not too late. We haven't crossed the threshold where we can't ask developers to send us proposals that include both keeping the building and not keeping the building, right? We still have that option moving forward after today.
Correct.
I think that's it for me. Again, I pulled it just to kind of mess with my colleagues a little bit, prod them to just to take one last look, and because I remember how free, how wide-ranging our last conversation was, from convention centers to museums and things of that nature, I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to have any more conversation, that we're comfortable with floating these priorities as they appear before us today as our, for our request for qualifications. That's it for me. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you. Just to add to that, I remember my support behind us, and it still stands, but it was under the conditions that we did have all of those encompassing factors, including our county colleagues reaching out to see if they would be on board as well. Just, it wasn't for us to take that on just the city by itself. So, I hope that when we're looking at this, I'm not sure at what stage should we engage others, but I just wanted to make sure that was stated with it regarding the wording here.
Just a point of clarification, could you just give me a little more detail on what specific element you're referring to? So, what we, our interaction with the county?
The Milton Small Building. Because there was a lot of talk around whether we were going to preserve that or not, and I support preserving it, but it was with, you know, the conditions of having other financial contributing factors, from grants to tax, tax, tax percentages, I'm losing the words for it, and also the interest of our county colleagues who were potentially interested in preserving it as well.
Right, so the proposals that we have received in the past did not necessarily include historic tax credits, so once you sort of engender that building to a specific program, there are requirements in what you might do and restrictions around that. It's possible that a developer comes in with requests for historic tax credits. There, the historic tax credit program in general is a lot about the building's facade. So, for instance, if a developer decided they wanted to bring the facade further or closer to the street, they might do something to the building that would make the historic tax credit program ineligible. And so, one of the things we will see as the proposals come in is the assumptions that each developer makes around how to make their financial model work, so those credits are available for a developer to partake of if they so desire in their model. So, they could preserve the building but not actually use the tax credits, depending on how they wanted to utilize that structure moving forward.
Whatever the best way forward is, where it's not just one party doing it all. And I'm, I'm open to not pulling the trigger too quick. If the colleagues want to talk about it, I'm open to it. If not, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that will conclude all of our pulled items. We will now turn to item number 35, which is the Downtown Durham Municipal Service District Annual Report, and we will hear from them for about 15 minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. I'm Aidan Nixon from the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. We're bringing forth Nicole Thompson, the President and CEO of Downtown Durham Inc. to make the presentation.
Thank you both. Glad to have you, glad to see you. Turn it over to you, Ms. Nicole Thompson.
Good, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor O'Neil, Mayor Protem Middleton, City Council Members, City Manager and City Attorney, and everyone here in the audience, staff and friends. Happy to be here today. I've got 15 minutes to share all the great things that DDI has done over the last fiscal year. It's going to be hard, because we've done a lot, but I'll do my best to go through this, and happy to answer any questions. There we go, there's our presentation. Just a little bit about DDI, our mission, very, very succinctly, we are, we were created back in 1993 to be the economic engine, the economic driver, the vibrant advocate for downtown, in order to ensure that we had growth and vibrancy within the downtown area. We are, our vision is to create a downtown that is diverse, unique, and thriving, heart of Durham, and is welcoming to all. Our main goals include clean and safe, economic development, placekeeping, and marketing, and we'll talk about each of those as we go through the, this presentation. And finally, just a nod to our organization, we have a 27-member board comprised of stakeholders in the downtown area and of the Municipal Service District, with representation from residents, small businesses, small property owners, large property owners, and small and large developers. So, quite a good mix of individuals representing the needs and concerns of downtown. We have seven members on our DDI team with one vacancy, and we have 10 DDI ambassadors, our Clean and Safe Team, who are the individuals that you see in the downtown area with the teal-colored shirts on. This is just a map showing our district. This has not changed. As you can tell, very, very quickly, it is from 147 to the old ballpark, just past the old ballpark, going north and south, and it is from just shy of East Campus to the west, all the way to Golden Belt to the east. Just a few things about our accomplishments. I won't read through these, you all have had the information, you've been able to go through that, but I do want to call out a few things in this, a couple of highlights. First, our panhandling, social services, and outreach. In the past, that number was quite a bit more, but due to the creation of the Heart Team and our cooperation and collaboration with the Heart Team, a number of those calls are now being taken care of and are handled by the Heart Team. We still interact, we being the ambassador team, interact very closely with the Heart Team. We are reporting those through the channels that were created in order to ensure that the Heart Team is called out when needed. But I do want to note that in years past, that number was much higher. But we are still interacting with our unhoused population within the downtown area. Under third, under placekeeping, again, a couple of highlights, we continue to operate the Mix at Durham Station, that is a Third Friday event. We work with DJ Pitypat. We set up a tent, and then she provides music for individuals as they are coming into the transit station, as they're staying there. We have gotten quite a bit of good feedback, and the people really enjoy it, and the individual we're working with is very excited to do that. We did take a hiatus in the winter, because it's a little cold out there, to play music, but she was back out, we started it back up last month. And it is kind of a kickoff to Third Friday, but really trying our best to ensure that we are including anyone and everyone in the activities around Third Friday. We have some pictures later on that will show our holiday lighting and the launch of the bullpen. One thing that we're very excited about was the work that we did around the NCCU homecoming, working with a number of our partners to ensure that alumni and students, as they were coming back for a homecoming, were felt welcomed. So, we were very happy that DPAC, the Bulls, the airport, had signs up saying "Welcome to Eagle alum." And then we also activated our retail space with paraphernalia, working with the Alumni Association and the Student Department at NCCU. And then I will call your attention to the final thing there, artists engaged for all of our events over the last fiscal year, and this is just through March, so this does not include the last quarter. We have had 26 performers or groups, we've worked with 26 performers or groups, 58 of them paid performances that we had, and then 58% of them were people of color and 38% were female. Going on to economic development, we have assisted 450-plus business clients within the downtown area, and then over 1,000 clients in general. Those are individuals who may not have a business need, but from concerns from residents, issues around clean and safe, placekeeping, any number of other things. Calling out 307 West Main, that is our retail space, it's about 300 square feet of retail space. We moved back in March of 2022, and when we moved into that space, that's right, I think, when we moved into that space, we actually created what used to be an office space on Main Street, we converted that into a retail space, and we are working to fill that with minority, small, and women-owned businesses. Currently, we have a short two-year, two-month contract with Hometown Apparel's, women-owned, that has a location out on Ninth Street, and then starting July, we will have a longer contract agreement with Echo, who will be working with some of their entrepreneurs to fill the space, and we're very excited to announce, hopefully in the next few weeks, who that first tenant under the Echo agreement will be. We had 48 new merchants open up in the downtown area and 13 that closed, and we have, and I'll mention more about the bullpen when we get to that slide. Under marketing and communication, we are still getting lots of compliments and kudos for the creation of the Merchant Map. That is a pink trifold map that is out there right now. We update that every three to four months. Things change that much in the downtown area, but people are using it, we see it on the street quite a bit. We have an interactive one on our website. We are in the process of working on our website and therefore also working on that interactive map, so it can be a little more user-friendly. Going on to advocacy, special events, we continue to work with the city on parking challenges for our businesses in the downtown area, continue to work on fine-tuning the outdoor dining program in parking spaces, and when then we were involved in some of the commuter rail conversations, aggressive panhandling, the Belt Line, and social districts, and also are watching the Happy Hour Bill that is going through the General Assembly at the moment. These are just some pictures of our ambassadors doing the work that they do in the downtown area, a lot of graffiti removal, but overall, just keeping our downtown streets clean and safe, emptying trash cans, removing debris from our sidewalks, removing graffiti, removing stickers, things of that nature. They also do quite a bit of hospitality, informing people of where to go, how to get there, check-ins for businesses, sort of a variety of things, and very much our eyes and ears on the street. Talking about the bullpen, that is something, working with the city, that we launched in December, December 3rd, actually, it became effective December 1st. We had a big launch December 3rd, where we had an all-day event starting at 11 o'clock, ending with the mayor doing a countdown to Light the Tree at CCB Plaza. It was a great event. We've heard great things since the launch in December from all of our businesses. We have 71 who are actually participating by selling drinks to go, and we have over 30 businesses that are allowing that in. We see that number tick up, some businesses are still watching it, but we're seeing and hearing great things. The Bulls are now participating, and we are getting into the warmer months, so we are ensuring that we keep on top of any issues, but to date, we have heard of no issues. A couple of trash issues, which we immediately address. But to date, we have heard of no issues, a couple of trash issues, which we immediately address. But other than that, we, we've not heard of anything big. We have a website. If you have an issue, that anyone can reach out and make sure to let us know if they're having concerns. But our businesses are very pleased with that and are very happy. And we remain, I believe, the largest social district in the state of North Carolina. We do have a website. We, we were required by the city to maintain a website. So if you were to go to our website slash bullpen, you will actually see all the businesses that are participating, and you will see a map and all the requirements around the, the bullpen. Just a couple of things about special events in downtown. We see them coming back. Certainly, we are sad to see some of our long-term special events that were in the downtown area not coming back. Our hope is that we will see the return of Full Frame and that we'll see some of our larger ones replaced. We were very happy, as you see on this picture, that Center Fest came back for the first time in person in 2022. So brought a lot of people into the downtown area, a lot of people into our businesses in the downtown area. We also had, this is a picture from our launch of the bullpen. We worked very closely with NCCU and we had four of the eight Greek, Greek and Greek organizations come and do a mini-step, step show. It was a crowd pleaser, and, and we are very excited and we're hoping to, to bring them back in, in a new and different way. So more information on that to, to come soon. And then, yes? Say again?
There was something wrong with the picture.
You know, they, they, those, those three individuals were very, very, very into what they were doing. So I, I thought it was a great picture to represent the energy that was occurring that evening. So, but if you'd like to get up there, we can certainly have an alumni and have you all come on and, and do your thing. This is a picture of DJ Pity Pat at the Transit Station. And, and we've had a long relationship with her, and she does enjoy the work she does. She was also at our launch. We did a opening day of the Durham Bulls this year, so she was also there. So we, we really do enjoy working with her. I do want to share a quick slide. We, we do hear many times that downtown doesn't appear to be receiving visits from, from everybody, that, that it, it, is it really a place that's welcoming for all? What does our visitor makeup look like? We have access to a database called Placer. It is actually tracking your phone. I'll just go out there and say that, that with your phone, you're being tracked. So we are one of those organizations that is using that data. So we have geo-fenced the, the bid. So we are not, let me be very clear, we are not tracking any individual. We are just using that to, to track foot traffic into the downtown area and into some of our larger venues in the downtown area, many of them owned by the city and the county. But from this slide, and I, I'll be very honest with you, if it had not done this, I still would have presented it. But when we pulled this for our State of Downtown Durham event, this is based on 1.8 individual, single visitors to our downtown area in 2022. So that's single visits, not multiple visits by the same person. And we have a good 50-50% mix. I know that 50% that are non-white, 28% were African-American, 12% Hispanic, and then the remaining, help me with the math, 20%, right? 20% was other races, two or more races, and, and other. So we're very pleased with this. Could we do more? We certainly could. We continue to ensure that the events that we sponsor and that we put on are open and welcoming. And we're very, very conscious of trying to provide sponsorships, mostly through use of the Spendable, our Spendable gift card, to encourage people to come into the downtown area. Our public input around our blueprint. So as you all may be aware, we are getting, we are in the middle of, or we're at the very beginning of launching our, our multi-month blueprint, Blueprint 2020, 2035. This is to look at how downtown will grow, what it will look like as it grows into the future. And we did a little bit of public input prior to putting together our scope of work. This is in no way means, or no way, the only public input we will do, community engagement that we will do. When we launch, launch the actual process, I mean, to, to actually look at what the, the plan will be, we will do quite a bit more of intensive community input, community outreach, not just within the downtown area, but we will be going out. This will be the first time that we will make a conscious effort to go out of downtown and, and invite voices in. But as you can see here, some of the major findings is, public safety is a concern in downtown, addressing homelessness and panhandling and housing affordability. Moving on from that, we identified seven key challenges. These challenges are what the scope of work will be centered around. The first and seventh one are kind of bookends, that we do need to come up with a coordinated and coherent, coherent vision of what downtown is and what that vision is for downtown. And then at the back end of that, challenge number seven, is ensuring that we all are buying into that vision and we all, and that would be the city, the county, DDI, public sector, private sector, all folks who love downtown are a part of this plan as we move forward. There are a number of challenges in the middle here. I will highlight that number five is one that came up. We did some very quick focus groups with various groups, commercial brokers, developers, residents, businesses, nonprofits, public sector. And in all of those cases, there was a common theme, that there is a fear that we are losing some of our unique assets and we are, and our authenticity, what makes Durham so unique, the reason that we all want to throw up the bull, the bull sign, we are, we are in jeopardy of losing that. It was a very interesting conversation, very interesting to hear that that was coming from all sectors. And, and that is something that we certainly are very aware of, that we have heard. But to hear it through this venue makes us know that we must really focus on how do we protect our locally-owned businesses, our, our vibe that makes Durham so unique. And just to end on a note, this is the data, the economic data that is happening in the downtown area. We are currently at 4.5 million square feet of office. We are at 4, 4,700, over 4,700 residential units. We added 240 units this year in the bid by itself. And then we have 287 shops, restaurants, bars, and service businesses, adding 32 in the downtown area. And then our visits, these are visits, not visitors. We had 6.8 million visits into the downtown area, and 1.3 of them went to a major attraction. Those major attractions are DPAC, the Bulls, Carolina Theater, the Armory, the Library. It's always bad when you start trying to do things from memory because then you miss some. So I'm missing five other ones, but those are to the major events in the downtown area. So that's very briefly what has happened. This is a picture from the lighting of the tree this year. And we're always happy to be a partner with the city on the great work that we're doing and appreciate the long, long partnership and support that we have had from the city since our start in 1993. Happy to answer any questions.
Colleagues? Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you so much. Director Thompson, President Thompson, Nicole, whatever to call you. I don't know what to call you.
Please don't call me president.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I got a chance to see some of it at your State of Downtown address, which was really good, and thank you for that. For disclosure, I, I do now have businesses in downtown, so I'm also a product and contributor of some of the data that you're saying. Regarding the festivals, what, what major festivals did we lose?
Moog Fest, Articul, and Full Frame are three of the largest ones that we, that we lost.
Do you have like a ballpark figure of economically what their impact were, were, what the economic impact was of those?
I don't. We work closely with Discover Durham for that. We can get that information to you.
Okay. And do we have any type of, from the city, do we have any type of financial support that would attract those caliber festivals that, that we provide to you? Or is that something that you all have in-house, or is that something that you need?
I am, I, I will defer to Parks and Rec. I will say that we are excited to work with the new, newly-created division within Parks and Rec that will be focused on special events. We're very excited about who was appointed to, to lead that. She's been, been a longtime city employee and very familiar with events and how they work, not just in Durham, but throughout the city. So, so we're very encouraged. That should streamline the process. We have heard that event managers, when they come into the process, can be very disjointed and very difficult, and you have to run around and get different signatures. So, so we're happy to see that Parks and Rec is moving forward with that. We provide minimal funding. We have a very small amount of funding that we have. We try to target that to new startups. So we are a, we have been a sponsor of Center Fest. That is one of the longer ones that we, we do remain a, a funder, a sponsor for. But then we also have been a funder, a sponsor of the hip-hop, I'm forgetting the name, Beats and Bars, Beats and Bars. We're a sponsor of the Blues Brews Festival. So there are a few that, that we are, and we're always looking for other opportunities where we can bring in a small event that will bring in a diverse group of people. A lot of our sponsorships now is given in the form of a spendable. So we will, we will donate $100 spendable with the thought that this is money that then could be, something that could be then given out to, to individuals to come back and spend that money at one of our businesses in the downtown area.
Thank you for reminding me of the new, the new position for Parks and Rec. I actually forgot about it when I asked you. I think that's going to help out a lot.
Yes, I do.
I want to go on record and say that I look forward to not only analyzing the economic impact or, or return on potential investment of major festivals, seeing that data and also being supportive of investing in it because it appears that it would turn, it would, you know, pay for itself. And considering that we are, we're trending to near-record sales tax revenues, that this is a trend that we want to really invest into. So I look forward to supporting that. Thank you guys for being the guardian of this growth. And the other thing that stood out to me was, you know, just the, finally, we're getting to the point of having some coordination of what we have in our downtown as an asset. And I look forward to supporting that as well. So I guess the most, the biggest thing I'll look for is just the economic impact of these festivals that are coming down. We, we do have the Walkin' Two Gum in Durham. As, as important as affordable housing is, you know, it can't be the only thing that we focus on. We have to focus on all of these matters so that it can support things like affordable housing. So I look forward to really honing in on this.
We, we are very excited to work with the city on, on what future events will look like. It is challenging in the downtown area, the, the closing of streets, the parking issue. So there, there, it, it makes it a bit difficult in downtown, but we're very encouraged that Parks and Rec is working closely with us as they maneuver through what that next vision looks like.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any other colleagues? Councilwoman Caballero?
Thank you. Good to see you, Nicole. Just, I just really appreciated the rapport, and I also really appreciated the work that y'all have done with our local businesses around our unsheltered folks and the work with Heart. I know it's been really challenging. I know last, and, and I know Housing for New Hope is obviously one of our other big partners in that work. I know last summer, we had several small business owners, or maybe it was early fall, with a lot of complaints and a lot of concern. And so I just wanted to thank you because what I'm, what I appreciate is, my concern there, my fear then was that we would start a trend that you're seeing in many other big cities across the city, which is to penalize and not offer compassion to these folks that are clearly hurting and need support. And I, at this point, just feel comfortable or good that we are making a very different decision in Durham that is more aligned with our values or those that we, we claim. You gotta, gotta act if you're gonna say. So I just wanted to commend DDI for their role in that. And I know we have a tremendous amount of work to do, and I know it's going to be a growing problem because, you know, our numbers are going to increase. Well, yeah, anyway. So it is a challenge and just very appreciative. And then I do, I really also appreciated the slide around the demographics because it's a comment that I make. I often see Latinos cooking my food, but not necessarily frequenting the restaurants in downtown. So I was happy to see that our Latino neighbors are actually coming downtown. We have a lot to offer. I know we have. It, it has been hard to lose some pretty amazing festivals. I know it brought in a lot of foot traffic and dollars, and I, and I'm glad that the city and DDI are working so closely together to have a different future.
Thank you. We, we are still working. We are very excited about the work that the Heart Team has done. We are very encouraged by the expansion of the Heart Team, that they'll be going later into the evening. Our businesses see an uptick in the more aggressive behavior in the evening. So, so we're encouraged and, and our hope is that continuing to work through our ambassadors and with the Heart Team, we can find solutions and understanding that, also including the, the Police Department and the great work that they're doing through and working with us and the Heart Team. So we do appreciate the, the collaboration between all three groups to, to deal with that concern.
Thank you. And two real other quick things. I know the Strutery is coming back this summer. I'm looking really forward to those dates, and I hope that that program expands. As, as folks know, I'm a big proponent of, we've got to figure out how to get sometime where our downtown is pedestrian and bike only. I know that that's like a long-term goal, but I think that will actually help. We all can see what happens around the farmer's market when they close down there. And I know that all those businesses within many blocks really benefit from just foot traffic and bikes. Thank you.
Yes, we are bringing the Strutery back, Strutery 3.0, I guess. I just said that. So, so yeah, we will start it in June, June, July, and August. Yeah, but we, we have a big marketing campaign around that with the dates. But, but we will have that within the downtown area and, and very excited. And we'll work very closely with the businesses this, this year to bring them out and have them a part in, in the closing of that street. One will have a family theme focused on water and splashing around. So keep, keep an eye out for our page, and we'll certainly share it with the City Council and with our partners.
Yeah, Pro Tim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Nicole. Good to see you.
You too.
Good to have you with us. I firstly just brag on you folk a little bit. It, it's a common refrain when I speak with colleagues across the state, a common question, you know, what's going on with downtown Durham? And, and a lot of that, and it's, it's a source of pride, I know, for all of us as we move about the state. And I know that has a lot to do with the work you're doing and your team. So please convey to them our, our undying gratitude for the work they're doing in downtown.
Thank you.
Disclosure, I sit on the DDI board, so, so a lot of these conversations that we've had, you know, I've had some intimate involvement with over the years. I'm, I'm very proud and I'm glad to hear about the, the cooperation with our Heart Team. One of the things I was most proud of, when I listened to other board members and stakeholders in downtown talk about the panhandling and homelessness issue, is almost in the next breath, they would say, "But we don't want it to become a law enforcement issue." And that, 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 that was a great thing that in Durham, part of our culture was. We, we, we recognize it as a challenge, but we did not want to be like other cities, as Councilmember Caballero mentioned. And the Heart Team has been an invaluable asset in, in addressing that issue. And even when our law enforcement did respond, and they're in the room, our law enforcement wasn't responding like other law enforcement agencies that we hear about around the country as well. So I want to commend them as well. Some of the biggest cheerleaders for our Heart Team have been our Police Department and our Police Command Staff here in Durham. I didn't want to talk about the, the bullpen and, and I had heard that, when I first heard that, it was the largest one in North Carolina. I was like, really? But, but it is. And so congratulations on that. One of the issues that was, concerns that was raised was, was the possibility of public drunkenness and kind of, you know, marauding bands of folk, you know, drinking and breaking windows and stuff. How, how's it been going?
We've had none of that.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's good to hear.
We, we are, we are, it's terrible working for DDI because every so often, we have to go out into the community and walk around and see how this program is working. So we, we do that quite regularly, and we're here in the evenings and on the weekends. And all jokes aside, we, we are not seeing that. We're seeing folks who are enjoying whatever that special beverage is. We are working very closely with the businesses to make sure that they're following the laws. We certainly don't want anyone to get caught by surprise. So making sure that they understand, as more businesses come on, that they understand the cups that need to be used and the hours and things of that nature. But we have had, to my knowledge, no issues with public drunkenness, disorderly contact, disorderly conduct, any of those things. A couple of little concerns here and there about trash, which we immediately address. But, but we've been very pleased. And the Bulls, the Durham Bulls now are participating, so we've been watching that. Again, no issues. They don't serve, but you can pour something in a cup and then leave the stadium. And we're, we're having no issues with that at, at all. So we did launch in the, the winter, which was probably a good thing to get us kind of ramped up and get ready for it. Now we're here in the warmer months and, and we're seeing more people enjoying it. And that just means they're spending more money in downtown. They're going into some of our retail shops. We have about 35 that are allowing alcohol into the store. So they're just staying a little bit longer, spending a bit more money. And that was the whole intent of, of the program, to get them to come into downtown in order to make sure that we were as competitive and offering the same things as our neighboring cities and downtowns in Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Raleigh, and, and why they're here enjoying that. in Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Raleigh, and, and while they're here enjoying that, spend a little bit more money.
Glad to hear that. And finally, to Councilmember Williams' earlier point about the festivals, it, it is precedent for us to give financial aid, financial assistance to some of these festivals. I remember in previous budgets, I know that Art of Cool has gotten money from the city in the past, and, and we have participated. So it hasn't just been about money, but something you've talked about actually, and that is, that is capacity and capability of our venues. Some of what these folk have talked about that are connected with these festivals have said it, it's not just about the money. It's, it's, there have been a number of things, venues and, you know, people make changes and stuff. But, but I appreciate your, your, your laser focus on, on the economic piece and, and, but to answer your question directly, the city has given money to these festivals before. We realize the importance, both culturally and economically, the importance of having these festivals here in Durham. I'm expecting, I'm suspecting that we'll, we'll get more, and, and I would say state too. And I, I suspect that some of these might be returning in the future, you know, given the right circumstances. But I did want to speak to that and say that yes, the city has indeed given money to some of these festivals in the past. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
If I could second that, yes. I understood Councilmember Williams' question to be, is there like a formal process that I, but you are very correct in, in giving quite a bit of money to Art of Cool. I shouldn't say it that way. Money to Art of Cool, CenterFest, I believe you all are still a sponsor of CenterFest and a number of events even outside of downtown. I think Bembe is, is a big, an event that you all sponsor and promote very heavily.
Alix, any other comments?
I guess Convention Center is next then.
I just wanted to take a moment to tell you how much I appreciate you, Ms. Thompson. From the moment we met, you have been called in many times in kind of untenable positions with your mayor and the interests you represent, which are all of our interests. And you have been a steady force, moving forward one step at a time. And I just wanted to thank you for a great report today. Having watched downtown evolve over the years, I see it's coming back in a way that's beneficial for all, all of us. It's not been an easy road, and I commend you for your work, the staff that you have helping you, and for your, for your board. So thank you, Nicole, for your job. Well done. We appreciate you today.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
So we turn now to item 33, the Carver Creek Supportive Housing Acquisition. And I do believe we have a couple of speakers that were signed up on the internet, but one, two who are here in person. Ms. Brianna Van Velsen, I believe she may have spoken. Also, Ms. Julia Gamble, I understand, is also in chambers at this time. And we also have Ms. Donna Carrington, just to let you know that we haven't forgotten you all and that you wanted to speak, but we will turn it over to staff at this time, who will introduce our presenter.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. We have Mr. Russell Pierce here today, Executive Director of Housing for New Hope. He is here to provide this presentation. The Durham County Board of County Commissioners heard this presentation on May 1st.
Thank you. Happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members, thank you for this opportunity to be with you with really a very unusual, I, I think that's probably the understatement of the, of the year, unusual opportunity for us as a community. I want to start today to talk a little bit about Housing for New Hope because I think one of the things that's come up in conversation is, you know, in what ways are we engaged together with the city and the county and other partners? And I, I think you've actually heard from a lot, a number of our partners, of how deeply engaged we are around a number of, with a number of populations across the spectrum with homelessness and affordable housing. One of the easiest ways we often find to explain ourselves is that we start with people wherever they are on their journey toward being stably housed, and we connect them to housing and the supportive services they're going to need in order to meet their goals, and among those things, remaining stably housed. And that's why for so many years, we have been working, for example, with street outreach. That's work that we've done in multiple iterations since 2004 in Durham and for many years, actually also in Chapel Hill. As you heard earlier, this is actually a jointly funded city-county project that has been running for nearly three years now. We also take on leadership, as I shared some of the point in time count data on Monday night. Increasingly, at the request of the city, we have taken on more and more of the leadership for the point in time count each year and work very cooperatively with a number of departments of the city and the county on encampment response. We also have, and if it's okay, one of my colleagues will leave these little yellow, we call them corner cards with the city clerk to share with you all. I appreciate Nicole and others have mentioned how we're different in Durham and how we respond to our neighbors that are experiencing homelessness. And on this card, there's a number of folks can call. One to tell us about unsheltered neighbors they're seeing, but also a number that many unsheltered folks can call on. And I'm proud to say that in Durham, 90 to 95% of the calls that we get are folks calling to say, I'm concerned. Is there something that we can do? Which very much reflects what's been shared earlier. We also, for 15, 20 years now, have worked in different versions of housing location and navigation. We are in the process now of standing up a new landlord engagement effort on behalf of the city, which works with seven or eight of our other homeless services and housing partners. This is built on two prior partnerships that we did with North Carolina Coalition and Homelessness and Blue Cross Blue Shield Funding, where we took the lead and only four cities in the state were chosen, and Durham was one. And we did that together, as I said, with eight partners. Since 2007, we have been one of the primary partners for rapid rehousing, which matches folks who are, at least by original program design, recently beginning to experience homelessness, need time-limited supports for up to about two years for rental assistance and supportive services. Durham with Housing for New Hope's leadership was one of the first three communities in the state of North Carolina to take on that work more than 15 years ago. We obviously do supportive housing, and we'll, we'll dive into that more deeply in a moment. And we also, over the years, have done smaller projects with affordable housing, including partnering with you all back in 2019 for the, my board requires me to say the award-winning Holloway Place because we won an award from the City-County Beautification Committee, where we actually took an old transitional shelter space and made it affordable housing that doesn't look affordable. And to our understanding, it is the region's, and that's beyond North Carolina, region's first attempt at affordable cohousing located down on Holloway Street. Because we work in so many different parts of the system, we're often able, alongside the work of community development and the homeless services team, we're able to see lots of trends and challenges, sometimes maybe a little earlier than others can see them. You're not going to be surprised to hear we are seeing a significant loss of affordable housing options, especially deeply affordable housing options. And that's critical to a lot of the work that we do where we are working with landlords to place people into housing. There's a lack of an adequate supply of landlords who feel comfortable renting to clients with complex housing barriers. As the barriers get more complex and multiply, we have less and less landlords who feel ready to take on those kind of challenges. And so, again, reduction in number of opportunities. We're seeing a significant increase in the community's unsheltered population, as I shared the other night. 105% increase since 2020, 300% since 2018, 10% here in this last year. We're also seeing aging populations in supportive housing. Now, in terms of supportive housing, at its most basic level, it is deeply affordable housing options that closely are linked with targeted supportive services to increase the likelihood of long-term housing stability. That means things like connections to substance use support, behavioral health, mental health, physical health, working on one's finances, job placement, job training. Oftentimes, in many communities, and I think this is true for us, when we hear supportive housing, we immediately go to HUD's definition of permanent supportive housing. And, and there's a couple pieces to, to realize about that. One is HUD has a very narrow, and there's good reasons for it, definition of permanent supportive housing. To get into this housing, you have to have faced chronic homelessness, which means that you've had at least one year of undocumented homelessness. That can either be a straight year or, and I'll say this slowly because people always think I'm, I'm kind of making this up. The other option is to have four episodes of homelessness accumulating to a year in the span of three years. And that will qualify you. That is more than challenging to try and document in many cases. But the other piece is just a disabling condition. And most often, what we see are folks who are experiencing significant mental health challenges and substance use challenges co-occurring. 60 to 65% of the time or more, that's what we're experiencing with folks who move into the supportive housing communities that we work with. In these communities, people do have their own lease. That's different in many cases than obviously what you would see in a shelter. Folks have their own lease. They are then connected to supportive services that connect to then their goals and help them be able to maintain that lease and remain housed. We've done this work for more than 30 years. Our founder, Terry Alaba, started. He was actually leading what is now Urban Ministries, the shelter portion. And what he was seeing was too many people going straight from the shelter to housing, only to cycle back. So innovation at that point was looking at transitional housing, which was there at the Phoenix House, there at the corner of Holloway and Elizabeth. It's now a private home again. But it served men and had services deeply embedded. Later, we opened Dove House, again, for women, deeply embedded services there on site. Over time, we moved toward having residential communities. Andover Apartments was built in two phases with 20 total units, serving 20 folks. Later, Williams Square was built, which is up at the location we're going to talk about today, with 24 total units. And what was interesting is, over time, we kept adding more space for folks to gather, community space or for services to come on site. And one of the challenges we've realized over the years is that seven people, 20 people, 24 people, it's not necessarily enough scale to regularly get the supportive services on site from a partner like Alliance or Duke Health. And so that's something that we've been paying really close attention to over recent years. We also were unique in the community that we have both the residential communities and we work with 30 or more landlords in the community for Streets to Home. So same qualifications, but we are partnering with landlords across the community to provide housing and then connect to services. Again, in terms of trends and challenges, we're seeing a lot of folks experiencing mental health challenges, substance use disorder concurrently. About half of the folks have income, so it's not unusual, particularly for Williams Square in Andover. We have folks who are referred to us and live with us who don't have income. So we're working with them to hopefully get connected to disability income and other sources, but that isn't necessarily always what's possible to happen. The other thing we've noticed is that because there is such a lack of affordable housing that we can go to landlords and connect with, we are seeing if somebody gets referred to one of our properties, they can be living on site in 20 days. If we have to work through Streets to Home, we're looking at 65 days because we've got to find that location and something that'll work. A 2019 report from the, from the City of Durham's, from the homeless service team, indicated that we need at least 500 more units of supportive housing. And that's kind of the moderate estimate. It ranges from 250 to over 1,000, depending on a number of factors. Currently, we are functioning in our community with a capacity of 357 units. That's 99% of that's actually being used. And a lot of that is actually dedicated towards veterans homelessness, not necessarily the populations that, that, that we will most commonly work with. We've also noted, it's an interesting piece in terms of the ongoing, in a sense, government investment year by year. When folks are in rental units, the cost ends up being much higher than if they are at one of the properties because a lot of that investment has, in a sense, been front-loaded so that we're able to reduce the costs over time, especially since we bring properties on and keep them on. We never have an intention of selling any of the properties that we create or take on. Now, I want to back up again to this idea that supportive housing has a broad definition, and we often very much think just of that definition that's HUD, PSH with chronicity. Because across the country, a number of communities and through Durham County, we've been engaging with this, the Familiar Faces Initiative. And what it starts to look at, and this was with support from the Corporation for Supportive Housing, is that if you sort of look at how people are getting housed, and I'm going to use that in a very, very broad way. You know, normally HUD, PSH, we're looking at that homelessness aspect only. But when we start to look at use of the health system and emergency services, when we start to look at use of the jail and engagement with law enforcement, we start to see additional broader populations that need this same kind of support. And so it's very interesting because we have partners from Duke who've been looking at some of this, doing some of the research alongside of us. And what I share with you today, the, the emergency department utilization shows just people who have been arrested into the detention center, just once at least, between 2014 and 2020. And you'll see that the top 50 utilizers are generating 1,400 to 1,500 visits per year. That's an average of 29 a person. And it's interesting because you see these top three reasons for visits. And I had to go back to the researchers and say, explain this to me. What, what do these mean exactly? You know, alcohol abuse unspecified, long-term use of meds not elsewhere classified, chest pain not otherwise specified. Folks sometimes are just coming in, understandably, to, to make use of the emergency room, to have a place to be. They're presenting with things that are not acute, and so the attendings are left with these, in a sense, kind of generic unspecified pieces where they can name what's going on underneath, but oftentimes it's, it's from these populations that we're trying to serve. Our community safety departments own Heart Team, no, no longer than they've been in existence. They were able to share, share with us a lot of similar data in terms of repeat engagements with folks. And you see a, a pretty consistent piece around mental health crisis, crisis call diversion, which generally relates to behavioral health issues. And so we didn't pull police data in this sense because we're trying to look at more creative and humane ways to engage with, with these populations. And that's what we're seeing with the community safety department. So some of the same faces showing up in each of those systems. We also, I thought this was very interesting from Durham County's work with the SIM. You know, one of the pieces that keeps coming back is housing, housing, housing. I love that quote there. People experiencing homelessness are in stable housing situations without the foundation of secure and safe housing. They don't have the resources to focus on their mental health needs. And so that underlies a lot of challenges. So as we started to notice these challenges across these different systems, we started to look at other communities that were creatively tackling this, oftentimes with support from the Corporation for Supportive Housing. Mecklenburg County has had the MECC fuse project going on for 10 years now. And they have been working on housing the most high-need individuals within their community, those familiar faces. And you see the, the numbers, 87% reduction in shelter usage by that population, 24% drop in ambulance service charges, reduction significantly in hospital charges. We found similar pieces in Denver with similar partners brought on board, reductions in shelter visits, police contacts, reductions in arrests. And in that case, they were tracking very closely the overall investments made from these different systems, and they were seeing a lesser cost by taking this kind of approach. The similar piece we found in these systems was that each of them had a campus with generally 100 to 120 units of affordable supportive housing with deeply embedded services on site. We see that in Charlotte at Moore Place, which has been in operation for 10 years. We see it in Denver with the Well Power Sanderson Place Complex. Raleigh is in the process of building a campus like this near Wake Med in partnership with CASA, the county alliance and other partners. We're seeing this consistently across the country. When we look at those different systems together, we are seeing a tremendous impact from having this kind of housing. So there began to be more and more conversations of why don't we have something like this in Durham? And if we did it, where, where would we want to try and do this? We knew first that we needed to make sure that if we do this, we have a broad definition of supportive housing so that we're not locked into just the piece around HUD's definitions. We want to make sure that there are deeply integrated services on site. And we began to realize that Duke Regional, especially with the Behavioral Health Center being there, there were a lot of advantages to being in that area, if at all possible. Very unexpectedly, and I think some of the people on the team thought I was kind of messing with them when we brought this forward, we were made aware, as Housing for New Hope, of the availability of the Carver Creek Campus. So let me back up and say just for a second, a, a number of us that are affordable housing nonprofit developers, and we're a very small part of this most of the time. DHIC is part of it, CASA is part of it, Habitat, DCLT. Self-help sponsor is a broker who keeps an eye out for properties that are coming available. And then will send around and notify a number of us, something's up, coming up, or something is up and available. Would anybody be interested in, in potentially trying to pursue this? is up and available, would anybody be interested in potentially trying to pursue this? And so the other partners looked at it, and this is often how we work, we'll say, okay, you know, who makes the most sense on this? And everyone said, it probably makes the most sense for Housing for New Hope to work on this. And a lot of it has to do with the fact that it is right next to a property that we already own. This is the site of the Williams Square twenty-four unit supportive housing complex. This is a really unique and interesting property for us as a community because, you know, oftentimes when you go through the Affordable Housing RFP processes locally or state, a lot of the question is what amenities are nearby? And this property is located just in from the intersection with Carver and North Roxborough. And so it is basically walking distance to Food Lion, to Trosa, to banks and financial institutions. It's one point three miles actually from Duke Regional. It has excellent sidewalks to the point, it's not unusual for us to see residents walking, or even if they have mobility units, they will ride those up to that space. Unusually, it has its own covered bus stop, which is really an incredible amenity for our folks to have because very, very few of them will tend to have vehicles that they own and operate. It's also unique in that across the front of the property, where the creek goes through and the forest, there's five, six acres there that you really can't ever mess with because of the flood plain that's there. It's in a good, safe place, but so often when you see these kind of properties, they're in an urban area or in a light industrial area or a commercial area, and you don't get any of this kind of just beautiful therapeutic space. As we went through the process of looking at this, we discovered something interesting because the property line really runs at a kind of a strange diagonal. Carver Creek folks can't get to their property without coming across ours. We can't get to ours without going across theirs. But we found that there's undeveloped property in the northwest corner that they own part of and that we own part of. And when you put it together, you could build forty-five to fifty more units right there on the site, and again, not disturb anything related to the creek or the trees out in front. In the very long term, and as I said, we always intend to keep our properties pretty much forever, there's the possibility for an additional building behind the additional, the existing Williams Square property if there was ever a need to go that far in developing things. There's space inside Carver Creek that could be utilized for offices, for telehealth, and other opportunities to bring partners on site. And we have the ability with twenty-four units and forty-eight units in Carver Creek, another forty or fifty, we're hitting that one hundred to one hundred and twenty level, which is really important. The property itself is thirty years old, and that's really part of why we're having the conversation today, forty-eight one-bedroom units. The acquisition cost is only a hundred and twenty-six thousand per unit, which is less than half really of what it's costing to build new units. We had a full property condition assessment undertaken. There's very, there's only ten thousand dollars of immediate things to do. I dare say many of us have bought homes that had close to ten thousand of immediate things to do, and then gave us a twelve-year capital plan that was in the two, two hundred and fifty thousand range. Nevertheless, we went back and looked and said, okay, you know, we want to be able to upgrade this property, improve the resident experience over time. And so we've set for ourselves a plan to do a renovation in the one point eight, one point nine million range of the property in the future. One of the key pieces about this property, and this may be kind of part of our learning as a community and maybe some opportunity to refocus and strategize a little bit, this property is at its thirty-year expiration of its protections. This property dates back to nineteen ninety-three. North County Housing Finance Agency has continued to monitor it. Our understanding, we know that there is local money in this originally, so this is something we've already invested in. All those records are somewhere in boxes and storage for everybody at this point, thirty years later. We're not sure if it's the city or county, but our suspicion is it was the city made the original investment. But the thing is that the protections are fifty percent AMIR+ and seniors fifty-five and up. All those protections end at the end of December. All leases have to be signed under those guidelines through the end of December. After that, if this is sold and becomes market rate, all bets are basically off. Those leases, as they expire, can be allowed to expire, people can be expected to move. And one of the things we discovered in doing an appraisal on the property was that the property appraised at the purchase price with the restrictions on it, without the restrictions, the property is worth more than a million dollars more than it's under contract for, which becomes very attractive, I'm assuming, to a seller, that if we aren't able to move forward with this, the property is literally worth a million dollars more if it can be just sold and become market rate. The other piece that we noticed going through this is that obviously the residents are older, it's a lower-income population, you have to provide marketing plans to the folks that monitor you. This one's monitoring plan is something along the lines of call the Durham Housing Authority, call Urban Ministries of Durham, and that's how they're making sure that they're meeting the requirements. Sixty percent or so of the folks are on subsidies at this point. As we toured the building, as we've talked with partners, many of us have been referring people to this property all along. This isn't just senior housing, this is actually senior housing that's been serving our populations for an extended period. As we look at this property, the idea is to create supportive housing there that has both, well, not both, but multiple, space for HUD-defined PSH. Alliance is interested in potentially helping with renovation of some of the units. They can go as high as twenty percent if this could all be worked out, and then there could be some Alliance-funded supportive housing. There's the potential to have people transition in place. One of the challenges we face with a Williams Square or an Andover is that once somebody becomes stable, they may have to move on. Well, stable may be staying there, not having to move to another place and go to that trauma, but they have no choice but to do so. And increasingly now, it's harder and harder to find places. In theory, somebody could come in with a rapid rehousing grant, when a scattered-site PSH grant opens up, shift to that, shift to housing choice voucher, all without having to leave that space. So we're taking away two traumatic steps for a lot of people who've experienced a lot of trauma along the way. We're also looking at ways that justice-involved individuals could find housing here in partnership with the Justice Resource Center, exploring that. And then also legacy tenants who would benefit from supportive housing. And I want to stop for a minute because there's been a lot of question, what does this mean for the people that are living there? And I appreciate, I've been impressed on this, to kind of go further and further with what we're explaining. One, we see no need for anyone to have to leave this housing based on a conversion. There's no need for that. Many of the people who were there, based on what we understand already, would benefit from supportive services being brought on site. That's going to be a benefit to them. The other piece is we recognize that some people may not want to stay as it's converted to supportive housing. So we already have, as I shared earlier, we have a housing location and navigation team. We can make our housing location navigation team available to people who want to move on. We have budgeted to have up to four thousand dollars in reimbursable costs if somebody wants to move on in the first two renewal cycles. We will, we will make that resource available. We have also been in conversation with other partners, including DHIC, on how we could have a more streamlined process for folks who said, you know, I really want to move to another place I qualify for, I don't necessarily want to be here when it becomes supportive housing. So we have a way for that to happen if that's what somebody wants, but there's no reason to, for anyone to feel like they need to move on. So in terms of the funding sources, for acquisition, we have come forward with a request first to the county and then to you as the city council to fund the purchase of the property. We know that this is unusual. Normally, we call and get, you know, folks at self-help, we talk about the Durham Affordable Housing Loan Fund that was created for times like this. Issue is, the Durham Affordable Housing Loan Fund, there's two issues, is fully expended and it can't go past, and I'm forgetting if it's four point four, four point five million. No agency can have more than four point four, four point five million out to grab a property. That probably would have been enough to grab this building when those rules were written in twenty eighteen or nineteen, or early twenty. But there are no resources there at this point. The other reason we've come forward is that this, we worked very closely with the sellers to have basically an extended period to approach different audiences such as you to find the funding. They are normally able to put a property under contract and have it sold within forty-five days. And so we really negotiated to get this extended out as much as possible. We've also been working with a number of private partners from the faith community, from businesses and foundations, and already have all the money that would be needed for the rest of all the acquisition costs and some of the initial planning for the creation of the full campus. Our sense is that there are funds available for renovation through a number of different sources. I have noted on there with asterisks where they are competitive processes. We continue to hear from the North County Housing Finance Agency that they are very interested in partnering with us. They were making a pitch in the middle of our conversation with the sellers that they would like to be partnered with us on renovation or the creation of new units. Obviously, for the new construction, competitive process, but one of the opportunities could be the four point two million home ARP funds that's been set aside for the creation of at least twenty-five units of supportive housing. This would fall within those various opportunities. So just quickly, who's in the conversation? We have been quite honestly amazed, and I think you've seen that a little bit over the last couple of days, at the number of partners coming alongside. We'd originally expected to have Ann Oshel here with us from Alliance Health, and you've got a letter from her. Multiple parts of Duke University and Duke Health are engaged in this with us, number of folks from the HART team, the county, and the city. We're seeing a lot of folks come together because it just makes sense that this could address a lot of challenges that we're facing as a community in a way that's not just humane, but this can be like a truly dignity-giving place for us as a community. So just very quickly, as I said, the property is under contract for six million and fifty thousand dollars. The county has already approved half of that funding, pending support also from the city council. We are coming up against our due diligence date, when some of our initial money will lock in, and a closing date currently projected at the end of June. We have a number of teams working together for really beginning the full planning of what the future could look like on the property. And again, and I put it in bold, we are identifying partners that if people don't want to stay on the property as it transitions, that that can be done, but the intention is no one should have to leave due to this. So our request then is to help us preserve forty-eight units of affordable housing, to secure this undeveloped land on the property that when put together with land H&amp;H already has, could hold another forty-five to fifty units of affordable housing. And then finally, to support the phased development of a master-planned supportive housing community. But the first thing we have to do together as a community is secure this property as quickly as we can so that all those other opportunities can follow. And one of the helpful things, and I believe this was sent in your attachment, Jarvis Martin from our board pointed out when we were with the county commission, oftentimes a big part of your expense when you're building new affordable units is the land. We're going to have the ability as a community to build forty-five to fifty units on this property on land that's already paid for. There won't be any more cost to it because really the cost is tied up in the building itself. So it's just a very unique piece for us as a community and a unique opportunity to respond to the needs of some of our most vulnerable neighbors. And I will stop there.
All right. Colleagues? Questions? Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation and for bringing this to us. This is more a question for staff, I think, about the fact that the project is expiring. And we did a lot of affordable housing investments, I know, as a city in the nineties and in the early aughts, and so those are all also going to be expiring, you know, in the next ten years or so. Do we have a master list where we track that kind of thing? I feel like we need to get ahead of it as much as we can so that we're not in this kind of situation where, you know, we're left kind of scrambling at the last minute to figure out if we can afford to keep something affordable.
I will allow Mr. Johnson to respond to that.
Thank you.
Reginald Johnson, Director, Community Development Department. I would say at best that we have a partial list. It's not complete, that's one of the things that we've talked about previously on our task list, of many things to do is to, there are some projects we don't know from the Community Development Department, we don't have records of them, and we wouldn't know until such time as something comes up. That has happened on several occasions prior to this.
Gotcha. So for things that we've funded, how far back would you say that list is complete? Like, ten years ago, do we know everything?
I would say, I would be guessing, I would have to look at it to say. One of the challenges is that the way the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency did business and the way we did business has changed over that period of time. Now, for the most part, we are engaged in some way, but when you're talking about twenty years ago, we weren't necessarily engaged, persons could have transactions on their own.
Gotcha. So if we didn't put money into it, we don't know about it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's the major, for those who we, where we have money, we know.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. I know you're on it, just, you know, we got to get ahead of this kind of thing.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Pierce. Good to see you here with us. He's not going to appreciate this, but I'd be remiss not to point out Terry Alaba's presence in the chamber today and just, he's been such a lion in this work in our city. It's really difficult to overstate this, the impact he's had on this work and on the generation of activists as well who care about this kind of stuff. So I just want to acknowledge Terry Alaba's presence in the chamber today and thank you on behalf of a grateful city and a whole lot of people whose names won't get called publicly, whose work, whose lives you've impacted through your work. So I, a couple of questions. I appreciate the list of who's in the conversation, very important list of who's in the conversation. I want to know who got something on it, though, in addition to who's talking about it. So the ask is, the county said has committed three, half of the?
Three million and twenty-five thousand, yes.
Okay. Are any of these other conversation partners, is the ask just of the city and county, just to put up the money, or is Duke or anybody else?
The ask of the, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
The ask of the city and county is the investment for the acquisition, for the purchase price. The other partners, their engagement is on the build-out of the supportive services. So in the letters of support, there's a piece from Deborah Clark Jones from the Office of Durham and Community Affairs, there's a piece from one of the divisions of, also from Julia Gamble and Alex Cho within Duke, with the Duke Clinics. So everyone's focusing really on the acquisition happening, and then we've really got to go into a deep process of what will the supportive services look like? Because a lot of that has to do with the next building that's built, because that's the place where not all of the services could be embedded. There is actually space inside Carver Creek for some of that to happen.
Right.
But over time, we need to do a full design process in order to make sure that what they need to have to be on site can be put into it.
Gotcha, thank you. So and the county's three million is contingent upon the city's?
It is, yes.
Okay. How many residents live there now? Is it?
It's forty-eight units. Since the first two months of our engagement in the process, there was turnover of six units. I haven't had an update in the last month or so, but there, it seems to be running at a couple a month, couple every six to eight weeks turnover.
And you're already, not you personally, but the outfit's already on the hook now for seventy-five grand of due diligence money, correct?
Yes.
I think I might have some more queries, but it'd probably go to staff, but I'll yield at this point now to colleagues, may come back for staff.
All right, and please allow me, Councilwoman Caballero, we did have at least two other folks, I believe, that wanted to speak. So I just wanted to check in, I think Ms. Julia Gamble has indicated that she does not want to speak.
She had to step away.
Okay, Ms. Brianna Van Zee, she's, okay, all right, thank you, I see she's saying no. And we also have Ms. Donna Carrington, who is on the internet with us, maybe? She's still there? Not there? All right, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Caballero, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Russ, good to see you. I just wanted to share that I, this is a great presentation, I was one of the folks who has been in the meetings from the beginning. I think the conversation around this started, quite frankly, right around the pit count. At least that's when I was asked to basically randomly come to a meeting, and then, if I'm not mistaken, there was a conversation around the familiar faces, and then the property popped up. Like, we were having a conversation of like, wouldn't it be amazing? And then amazing happened, as far as I'm concerned, with an opportunity like this. I want to really say I want to really thank everybody who's been on those calls and in those Zooms and really looking at models across the country. I think that our, the city's affordable housing plan to date is excellent. I think that we are also starting to see the places in that plan, or when we think about affordable housing along the entire spectrum, where there's gaps, and this is a place in my mind that there's a gap, and this meets this gap. I will say, I'm just going to let my colleagues know, I absolutely want to fund this. If folks are on the fence or have questions, I know I'm one of seven, but I do think that this is an incredibly important opportunity. I really appreciate our county commission colleagues for already making that monetary commitment, pending our monetary commitment. I do want to share that, and this is something for the future. I know that there's opportunity on the build-out. I expect Duke to actually pony up a lot of money for this. If you look at other cities, Chicago has a tremendous program where their hospitals, because it's cheaper for them to fund units than to have people in the ER, they fund units all over the city. I'm pretty sure it's UIC Hospital, UFC Hospital, there's a lot, and they have a lot of money that they pony up. And so the massive healthcare system in Durham County is Duke. And so while I'm very willing and happy to make this what I consider a down payment, the person that has a $7 billion or the entity that has a $7 billion endowment, the last time I checked, needs to pony up some serious cash. And so I'm just saying that very openly. Again, committed as a council member, we have to do a lot for our neighbors who are experiencing, as we know, you know, this goes into the DDI conversation that we had earlier in the presentation. This goes into expanding the Hartz program, but if we don't have actual units to put our residents in, it's just a revolving door, and it actually is more expensive because folks are utilizing the jail and the ER. So that's where I'm at, and I look forward to further conversations with our partners across Durham. Thank you.
I do have a question for staff. In terms of the ask of the city, where would that money come from?
So in our initial discussions, we talked about fund balance as a source of funding. If this is something the council chose to fund, again, today was a presentation. Staff was not, you know, making a recommendation or making a request. Obviously, you heard the request from Mr. Pierce, but that is the initial, that's what comes to mind initially for a source of funding.
And just for clarification for the public, would you explain what fund balance is?
I'm sorry. Thank you for that question. That would actually be from our general fund savings.
Thank you. I'll have some further questions, but I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Johnson. I would just like to add one point as we are in public meeting. The Forever Home Durham or our regular affordable housing program that goes across the spectrum, it was a five-year program, and the dedicated housing funds and federal funding is all allocated to planned projects. So as Mr. Pierce mentioned when he came, this was, this was something that came, you know, came into existence, and there's, you know, the funding that is already set aside would not be able to cover, you know, something of this magnitude. So that is why Deputy Manager Johnson is referencing the fund balance as the major source of funding for a project of this size. It would be where it would have to be, where it would have to come from.
I'll turn back to my colleagues before I have further questions. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. Obviously, this is something, actually, it's a little scary because how many more situations out there are like this? So I think that compelling that list is going to be important so that we won't get any more surprises. I, the question around an additional 45 to 50 units is, based on the trajectory of our population growth, we can always choose to, you know, fight against homelessness and the unsheltered, but I'll say out loud what no one really wants to hear is, because of how things work in our society, there's always going to be, you know, some type of, you know, bad situation that we're going to have to respond to. Is that enough? Is that enough units? Is this campus big enough right now? I don't know if going back to revisit it is going to be feasible.
We see pretty consistently in the other models that they're in that 100 to 120 range, and I think that we'll be able, and I fully agree, we expect other partners to be on board. They just moved at a pace they couldn't sign on that quickly anymore than they have with the letters and things. We feel like this is something, and that's why, one of the places we started was, let's start tracking data, because we know this can prove out based on what we're seeing in other places. And it may be that over time in the community, we may need one or two additional of these kinds of properties, but kind of going back to the down payment idea, this is where we're able to start. I think we're concerned, we don't see them go much past 120 units, so I think there's some concern in terms of kind of the balance of how many folks are in one place with the services without becoming too much of a concentration.
Got you. This may be a stretch of connecting dots that I don't know they're supposed to be connected or not, but our AMI is determined by Orange County Chapel Hill and Durham County region. But when we're talking about housing for the unsheltered or homeless populations, we aren't, we aren't including the contributors to what drives our housing cost in the AMI. I know we don't have a lot of time, but I would love to get really creative in how we can have this conversation reflect that. I don't even know how that would work going across county lines, but I know it does in the AMI. So I'd love to look at how, you know, Carolina can potentially play a part in this, in their hospital and Duke, of course. I know Duke is actually looking at getting involved in some capacity, but, you know, right now, I think we're looking at it as a direct ask or request, when I think there is opportunity to get really creative, not only in the services side on the backend, but also on this upfront side. And I think the only thing that I'm still looking for is where is the sustainability component of this? We say that, so we're creating this permanent supportive housing, but do we have programming? Is the programming intended to support, you know, throughout eternity for the residents there, or are we looking at, you know, where we can supporting residents to become back independent?
Absolutely. And really going back to that 2019 report, you know, one of the pieces we noticed, there was almost a negative rate of departure from the PSH communities here in town and projects. And so over the last few years, there's been much more intentionality of how we're connecting people, especially when more HCVs became available to the homeless service system. We were able to connect people to some HCVs with success. But I think our sense is that you, over time, you probably have kind of three populations going through this, through a property like this on a regular basis. You have some folks who, yes, they're going to be able to go through, it could be six or seven years, and then exit to an HCV or another market rate type housing. You'll have folks who really will benefit from this for the long term. That's going to be their long-term stability, and they can become your anchors. And then other folks, I mean, it's, there is such an adjustment that I think some folks go through, and it may take one or two times through it, through those kind of opportunities to get to that place of being long-term stable. So we kind of see it being those three, not just, I know we say permanent supportive housing and people hear forever. The HUD definition of permanent means a one-year lease. That's the permanent in PSH is normally a one-year lease.
Yeah. Those different definitions by those agencies is, speaking of that, I hope that, you know, and maybe it exists, but I haven't seen it, but just all of the options and resources that we have to offer in Durham, I'd love to see some type of like graphic that can show coordination amongst all of those services, from Urban Ministries to Housing for New Hope to Families Moving Forward, to our departments of Community Development. Just, I'd love to see everything that Durham has to offer in one place so that it can help, at least for me at least, that it helped me think about how creative we need to be.
Right. Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam.
Councilman Hosea. Councilwoman Hosea.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Pierce, let me ask you a question. Is this request, this 3 million free and clear, or would Housing for New Hope be amenable to the city being listed on the title?
We expect that this would follow the normal pattern where, and Manager Page asked some really good questions about this last week, and there was a piece that I had forgotten when we discussed this. Two, our Andover property was built in two phases, Andover 1, Andover 2. Andover 1 has local funds in it, and there's a monitoring process set for 20 to 30 years. That was in 2005. Holloway Place, which was completed in 2019, also has local funds in it, and it has a similar pattern. So we have a pattern of, if it's home funds we follow, in terms of those regulations, that's what we follow. The city also has the ability to set those. Even a number of the contracts we have with homeless services, if they're local money, if it's DHF, then it points to, it points to whichever set of regulations were to follow.
Got you. And I appreciate that, and the city manager reminded me, and I had made a note to myself, monitoring and ownership would do different things. So I'm actually talking about if the city would decide to do this as planned, without, you know, we're not putting the city offices or anything or that, but if it were reflected as an increase in the city's real estate portfolio, even though it's being used for that purpose, is that something that you think your organization would be amenable to?
If we could work through what long-term maintenance and care of the property, we don't see that model in other communities. We see partnerships coming together for it. I think because in many cases municipalities don't want the long-term responsibilities for the property.
Right. What if the long-term response, I mean, if we're given the 3 million, I'm really getting at framing for our residents and our taxpayers for this, because, full disclosure, I want to make this purchase. So I'll add my voice to Councilman Capiere's and whatever the staff, if it's fund balance or if it's just our regular checking account, whatever, I'm amenable to making this purchase. What I'm curious about now is, is it just free and clear, it's writing a check for 3 mil, which I think it's worth it? Or is there some, I know monitoring is, already exists, but is there some type of instrument or configuration where the city, we can demonstrate that the city has an interest in this, with it being, doing what it's doing without any change?
And my understanding is, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Go ahead.
My understanding is when those comply, like with the NCHFA piece, they can't even sell that property to us without us being in conversation with NCHFA about it because they have, they have that amount of control over it. And that's my same understanding with the city. And part of my piece I may be simply missing is, we don't ever sell properties, and the properties we have have come online, just even the latest one was like weeks before I came. So I'm not as familiar, but we could absolutely have that discussion.
Sure. I'd be interested in that. So colleagues, I'll just say, I'm interested in making this purchase. I think this is a missing piece in our array when addressing issues of homelessness and shelter insecurity in our city. I think it's an important piece. I'd like to make the purchase. I also would like staff to take into consideration the points I made about what it would look like, and particularly also noting Mr. Pierce's grant, so at least looking at some type of configuration. But I'd like to meet the county on this as well, so whatever that's worth. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You go back.
Councilwoman Hosea.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you so much yesterday for hosting me to come out and see the property, and we had a wonderful conversation about just, you know, the project in general. But I'd like to say, you know, housing first honestly helps in terms, especially with clients with dual diagnosis, which is mental health and substance abuse, and it really is evidence-based that if clients have housing, it does help in their recovery. And so I am also on board with it. I just want to make sure that we have the funding to support the county in terms of, you know, because I was with some of the county, my county members yesterday, and I just want to make sure that they have already agreed to, to the, I think it's what, 3 million? 3 million, they have already agreed and voted on that, am I correct?
Yes. And my understanding is, I've been learning about ILAs. My understanding is they initiated the ILA process with the work that they did 10 days ago in order to help move the conversation forward if you all became engaged.
And I think the other conversation we had yesterday, too, was making sure that those relevant residents, the elderly residents, will not be displaced, and I want to make sure that that's on the record. And also, we talked about the model of case management and making sure that that case management model, I know you're looking at different models, and we talked about some that I knew about, but also that spend-out model, maybe case management, supportive case management, peer support, and also those wraparound services.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions, and I kind of raised those, as I told you in our meeting together, and I appreciate that, that since I've had office hours in the mayor's office since, I think, October, the last count that I heard was that we have about 4,500 nonprofit agencies in Durham, and 95% of that have been nonprofits who have come in with an ask for the city, and some of those have been emergent issues. So I want to make sure that as I give my agreement, that I think this is a unique situation, that I am clear with the public, the questions that I would want to have addressed as we venture down this lane. Number one, I would want to know that we would have affordability restrictions in place for about 30 years. I would also, if we cannot actually be on the deed, ask that the city and the county have the first right of first refusal, first right of refusal in the event that property does. We can't predict, you know, under U may not be so, but we don't know what the future will hold, so I would hope that the county and the city would have the right of first refusal if it ever came up for sale. I do want to let you know that I think it's necessary. I think it will be a great addition and gives us the opportunity to really focus in on the campus with services. And so I do think that we can justify going into our savings, keeping in mind that we just had somebody ask us for $250,000 earlier, and as I've indicated, I've had numerous asks for emergent situations, but this does fall into a unique category for our most vulnerable and marginalized community members. So with those two caveats, if they could be included in the ILA, I think you'll have my support as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I know time is of the essence. I would just really, as I, too, am supportive, I really would like to make this as close as possible to some type of campaign to get others involved, and maybe not toward this site specifically, but just this initiative in general. I know you guys are already working hard, but I don't think this is going to be the first time we're going to run into this issue. And I think that this, as I stated at your press conference, it's time for, you know, we have enough churches on every corner, enough businesses in this county and city and the private sector to make attacking homelessness a public-private partnership. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to engage the broader community, to be players in solving this crisis. I visited a friend at the hospital at Duke recently, Monday night, and there were 42 people sleeping on beds in the hallway, and I was told this is, you know, these are folks that just needed a place to sleep tonight. So this is home, it is personal, but there are a lot of folks that are sitting in the audience or on the sidelines watching, and I challenge them publicly, get in the game.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I do have one additional question in terms of renovations, and I know that may be far out, but what assurances that we, how do you plan for those residents who are already in there, if you have to go in and renovate? What would that look like, if you have any idea?
Sure. So we've created a renovation budget, and that's, the numbers are included into the pro forma we created, and we did it in a simple way. We just said, okay, let's assume we're going to take out the loan for the full renovation and then run with it. That isn't necessarily how we'd approach it. Our sense is that for the most part, we could do it as people were transitioning. They're The apartments are in remarkably good shape. I mean, that's, several people walked it with us, and then we had professionals walk it. And so, what we've been able to do in other situations, we can pay for someone to be out for a period while it's renovated, or give them the opportunity to move into another unit on the, you know, on the same floor, on the same property. So, it should be really minimal displacement from what we can tell. So.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions or comments from colleagues? Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Forward to it. Sorry. We now turn to our next presentation, which will be item 22 from our police chief. And that is captioned, just to make sure that the record is clear, 2023 First Quarter Crime Report. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good morning. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, Manager Page, all of our City of Durham employees, as well as our community. So, now is the time for the first quarter report of 2023. So, I'm going to go through this rather quickly, because I know you, I want to free up some time for some questions. So, as you've seen before, Part 1 Violent Crime, this quarterly report obviously covers the period of January to March 2023. And during this time, what we saw overall violent crime, there was an 11.4% reduction. However, if we actually kind of drill down into the actual numbers, what make up our violent crime, homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault, we are up 27.3% in the homicide category. As of March, the end of March, we had 14 homicides, and you know, to date, we had 19, with the latest one happening last night. Our rapes were up 38.9%. And then, we saw a rather significant reduction in our robberies at 41.5%. So, between the reduction in our robberies to the increase in our homicides and rapes, we still did have a slight reduction overall. So, regarding our homicides, 14 of those were all criminal homicides. So, we didn't have any negligent manslaughter, nor did we have any cases that were deemed justifiable. Our rapes that were up 38.9%, 21% of those offenses, I'm sorry, 40% of those offenses occurred in prior years. So, we're seeing more reports, more rape, sexual assaults being reported from prior years, which is, which is good. We want to have those reports. We were able to clear 13 of those, and nine of those 13 were actually reported from prior years. So, again, hats off to our SVU and our cold case staff that are really doing a great job trying to bring closure to the tragic assaults for our victims. Looking at our robbery cases, so at the end of the first quarter, you'll see that we saw a decent decline of our robbery cases, and we ended up having 100 incidents, actual robbery offenses that occurred. So, that's going to be, as I've learned from Mr. Shees, who is in the audience, I learn a lot from him, that that was the lowest that we've had since October of 2018, since we started reporting through NiBRS, and that's the National Incident-Based Reporting System. 71 of those 100 robberies that we had were from persons, so we're still trending down in that, about 45% or so. And 29 of those 100 robberies were commercial, again, trending down 41%. 26 out of the 29 robberies that we did have were commercial. Those were from retail businesses, so about 90%. And so, we are seeing definitely, those are keeping pace with where we were. The percentage of robberies from persons, you know, we always take a look at our victimization, because our liaison unit actually goes out and does outreach based upon our victimization. Robberies from persons involving Hispanic victims was at 39% in the first quarter of 2023. And firearms are still present. They were used in 50% of our robberies, and one of those actually ended up resulting in a gunshot wound. So, our aggravated assaults, just slightly down at 7 tenths of a percent during the first quarter of 2023 compared to last year, same period. We had 272 actual aggravated assault offenses. However, there were less incidents. So, what does that mean? That means that more people are involved or are victims in those incidents. We had less incidents, but more people, which also goes along with what we see with some of our, with our homicides from year to year. 25% of those aggravated assault incidents, or 45 of those, were domestic-related. And then, of the 137 non-domestics, so the remainder of those, 79 involved firearms, so another 58%. All right. Let's look at our shooting incidents. So, again, we are up overall for our shooting incidents, about 24% from this time last year. But we are down in the amount or the number of persons that are actually shot, or that have been shot. And so, one interesting, again, one interesting item that was pointed out is that of the overall 224 incidents that we had for the first quarter, 25 of those were from ShotSpotter alerts. And that's where no 911 call was received or generated from a resident or a community member. And so, where we really need to look at that is where we do typically compare quarter to quarter from previous year to current year. Last year, we didn't have ShotSpotter, right? So, really what we're looking at is, we had 25 additional shooting incidents that most likely we would not have known about if it weren't for receiving the alert from ShotSpotter. 46%, we are still seizing a significant amount of firearms. 46% of the guns that we did seize during this quarter were actually seized from traffic stops. All right. Let's move on to our property crime. We're up in every category. So, overall, we're up 11.2%. And really, most significantly, looking at being up 59.7% in our motor vehicle theft. So, again, you all have heard, the social media has really driven our motor vehicle incidents for, you know, it's 59.7%. And again, I think for the first time since I can remember, Hondas are not the motor vehicles that are being stolen the most. And unfortunately, it's Kia and Hyundai's. So, of the 264 motor vehicles that we did have stolen, 71 of those were left running unattended, or had the keys somewhere in the vehicle. So, thank just key fobs, people leaving those key fobs somewhere in the car makes it easier to steal. In the United States, 114,502 Hyundai and Kia vehicles were stolen in the US in 2022. That is a 95% increase from 2021. And so, you know, our team has been working very hard, and you all have probably seen some of the social media outreach that we've done, along with the rest of our staff, really trying to advise and educate our residents, our community members, not just in Durham, but in other jurisdictions that might have or be owners of Kias and Hyundai's. You know, once that initial upgrade was pushed out, there was other things that you had to do in order for that upgrade to take effect, that the owner had to do on that end in order for it to be successful. And so, we put that information out in both English as well as Spanish. And then, when we look at our burglaries and our larcenies, larcenies are not quite as up. It's the lowest in the three categories, but with our burglaries, it was 14.9% during the first quarter. There were 316 actual offenses, and 62 of those were to homes. Commercial burglaries did make up 18% of those, and then, obviously, the top three commercial locations were our specialty stores, convenience stores, and restaurants. We have recently started a new pilot initiative based around risk terrain modeling. Mr. Shees had actually brought this initiative forward, and we are hopeful that this initiative will help us kind of address the quality of life issues focused around places and not people, right? And how do we help to mitigate some of the crime trends and rates that we see in areas that have been identified as hotspots throughout the city of Durham? All right. So, let's talk a little bit about clearance rates. So, as I have recently said, that we no longer, or the FBI no longer provides clearance rates in that kind of drilled-down detail as they did prior to. And now, clearance rates are really being captured as a nationwide average. But for the clearance rates that we do have, which is the last time it was posted, the 2020 rates, we were up individually in homicide. We were well past clearance rates for the first quarter of 2023. We were clearing, cleared homicide cases at 78.6%. Our rapes were being cleared at 26%, which both of those were above the FBI standard clearance rates for 2020. Robberies were slightly below, and aggravated assaults were also slightly below. However, if we take a look at the overall, using what the FBI now utilizes for clearance rates on a national average, we're at 32.5% overall clearance rates for violent crime. We're slightly below, we're slightly below that national average for clearance rates. Our burglaries, larcenies, and motor vehicle thefts, with the exception of motor vehicle thefts, we were above clearance rates for 2020. However, on the average, we are also above our clearance rates for property crime, which is, as you know, that's a big deal, because property crimes are oftentimes more difficult to solve than any other of our types of crimes that we have happen in our city. Of the total violent crime cases that we received through the first quarter, 69% of those were cleared by arrest. 31% of those, the remaining 31%, were cleared by one of the valid exceptions. So, there was sufficient evidence to support an arrest. However, there was some element that was not under, in the control of our investigators. So, whether there was lack of victim cooperation, prosecution was declined by the district attorney's office, those things that are out of the control, we were not able, we were not able to clear those 31% by arrest. Let's take a look at our Priority One calls for service. And so, this is, I'll spend a little bit of time on this. So, overall, our Priority One calls for service for the first quarter, we were up 10% in our actual Priority One. So, when we thought, we think about the calls, we have to get there right now. The life or death, the emergency calls. And we were taking, it was about 2,154 Priority One calls for service. That's a significant increase from this time last year, especially whenever we look at, they're not any other type of calls, they are solely Priority One calls. Our average response time, we are, I think this is probably the furthest we've ever been off of our target that I have seen in such a brief, a short period of time. We are averaging in response to those calls, six minutes, 38 seconds. Our target is five minutes and 48 seconds. And we've said this before, and we've had conversations about this, that, you know, we've answered 49.1% of those calls in less than five minutes. But really, when your average response time is nearly a minute higher than what your target should be, that's a troubling number. Staffing, growth, those all kind of go into the mixture of why our response times are where they are. So, this is also a slide, you all know, I won't go into this in great detail, but it's a slide that we like to look at our adjusted staffing levels. What does it look like when our staffing levels is 50 to 59% versus 90 to 9%? It helps us gauge the sweet spot, really where we need to be on a consistent basis on uniform patrol. So, these are solely patrol numbers, and as you all can deduce, as our staffing increases, our time that we have to respond to calls, it actually decreases and actually goes below what our target time is. So, staffing at the end of first quarter, so at the end of March 31, we were at 80% staffing. Our actual, we're authorized for 540 sworn, our actual is 431 non-sworn. We are at 84% staffing, and our actual is 112. So, we are, just within the last few weeks, we have lost officers within the last couple of weeks. We still are tracking through Power BI. We're utilizing the tracking system to be able to project. Staff has actually done projections all the way out to 2038 on retirements alone. So, between now and 2025, and there will be at least one or two of us in exec staff, we will be retiring 2025 or prior to. We are looking at about 31 retirements, and these are officers that would be eligible to retire within the next two years. So, what does that mean for the police department? What it means is that we are, at this point in time, we are still not receiving in, we're not keeping pace with where we need to be to really be able to start to dig out of where we are, the deficit that we have for staffing. And we knew this. We knew that it would not be overnight. So, recruiting unit has worked very hard. As a matter of fact, I think there is an open house tonight. But the recruiting unit has been working, visiting community colleges, has really been doing a lot of outreach. We, you know, we implemented the, for our referrals, so paying our staff not just sworn, but also non-sworn for referrals. They are our greatest recruiters. And so, we've been doing a lot of that. We have really been working with the media to promote our hiring events. We've started offering conditional offers almost immediately. So, if this recruit or this recruit candidate has passed both the physical fitness as well as the written test when they come in, we will, we want to go ahead and offer them a conditional offer of employment. The idea is to really get them before someone else gets them. And then, we send them through the rest of the background process. Our recruiters attended 25 events for this quarter, which is substantial, because our recruiters are also, some of them are also doing backgrounds. We did a reorganization of our recruiting unit, as well as our training unit, to make it align better, and we are seeing our backgrounds move a little bit quicker, both with our sworn and non-sworn. Our training unit, so our training unit has changed. Back long, 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 long time ago, when I came through, you were given a big book first day, and you were expected to run these ridiculous amounts of this distance on the first day. We know we have a different generation, and we have to prepare them. So, the training unit has started. So the training unit has started, once we have a pre-hire, so someone that has been hired and they are going to the next academy. So for example, we already have 12 hired for our next academy in August. They have already started their training. So they've already started providing them with the materials, and they do study, almost a study hall. They have started doing the physical fitness portion so that when the very first day of the academy happens, it is not like throwing them in an ice bath. And we build up their confidence is what we are finding with our newer generation is that they have to be confident and able to in in for their ability to perform well and make it through the academy. So there's a lot of 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 measures that staff is taking. We're using a new interview now system that really does streamline the application process. We have billboards that that have been redone and are now going, have been, I think we have one up on 85 coming into Durham. So we're doing a lot focused around getting more applicants. Internally, we are still working with our officers on how do we keep you, right? And asking those questions. And 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 we're able to 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 start to form some initiatives that we can do internally that that I'm hopeful that it will, it will help. So for us, it's about making our officers genuinely understand and know that they they do matter. Okay, so U visa requests by quarter. So during the first quarter, we processed, we received 64 U visa requests. And I will tell you, Captain Packard, who was sitting here, he makes that a priority. I don't, their date doesn't go by without him saying, I've gotten more U visa requests in, I'm going to do those first before I do anything else. Forty-five of those were approved and 19 were denied. And on any denial, we always make sure that we are contacting the applicant so that they are very clear on why that U visa request was denied. 70% of those requests submitted this quarter were were approved. We do not have a backlog of U visa requests. We usually get them processed within a week of receipt. So Crime Area Target Team, so they continue to to work in and around city, citywide, city of Durham. They have been very helpful to our gang unit and helping our gang unit as well as helping our vice and narcotics unit and some of our task force officers with their work. They made this quarter, they made nine community referrals to other departments. So they have started assisting with our risk terrain modeling pilot initiative and program. And they also were able to seize about 70 firearms, and seven of those had been stolen. We still see firearms stolen out of unlocked cars. Thirteen convicted felons were found in possession of firearms, and 78 charges were a result of firearms-related arrests. Okay, so ShotSpotter. So we, I've got Mr. Shees here, so anything that I I fumble, he'll help, he'll help out with. So as you know, our pilot program began December 15 of 2022. And we have been, this team has been extremely purposeful in ensuring that the pilot program that we are, we are currently involved in is is very, very thorough. And 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 we are very transparent about the program in itself. And so I'm sure many of you have actually seen the platform. Someone asked the the other day about how often is this this platform updated for the public? And the updates generally would occur the same day. And so you're seeing virtually almost a real time within a few hours. So if we're looking at ShotSpotter alerts published within 60 seconds, so we publish the ShotSpotter data that ShotSpotter sends to us, so that's on our platform. But this is a separate platform that staff built out because we we are capturing more information than what ShotSpotter traditionally has captured. With that said, they have actually, they have really been very appreciative of the extra work that that staff has done around analyzing what they are doing and their operations. I will say that ShotSpotter recently did rebrand to Sound Thinking. And and so that is in part due to some of the work that staff has been doing around analyzing the pilot program. So by contract, you all know that 90% of all alerts for ShotSpotter will be published within 60 seconds. So those are alerts that come to them, directly to them into their review center. That's not the alerts that sent from the reviews center to us. However, we actually capture and we calculate, calculate from when the shot was actually detected to when it's first published. And so that's what we see here is 94.55% of the ShotSpotter alerts are published within 60 seconds. Our gunshot detection, so I think it's they, it's within 25 meters, I think that's 82 feet of accuracy of where that gunshot goes off. And we have found, in the location performance, we have found that it's it's working at 94.16% of the time. So anytime we have and we discover that the location hasn't worked or that there was, you know, a false negative or a false, false positive, Mr. Shees and the rest of the ShotSpotter committee, they are in constant conversation with the ShotSpotter representatives about this. Incidents that we have had happen, we have worked with them to do, insisting that they do reviews, internal reviews of their practices, just as we would do with ours as well. So our median officer response time, so what what we had kind of hoped would happen is that a reduction in the in the time it takes for an officer to respond to an activation, we have seen a reduction in that time versus not having a ShotSpotter alert. So we've been able to, from alert to arrival, the median response is about five minutes and four seconds. Obviously, on an individual basis, we have seen it less than that, less time than that. So that's, that's a very good thing. So for, from the time that ShotSpotter was, went live to the end of March, and New Year's Eve, New Year's Day are not included in in this, we still have people that ask about that, so it is not included in the platform. There were 385 published alerts. And from those, we had the unique gunfire incidents, those were 332. And then the actual rounds, so not every alert that we have is one round. We do have a lot of just single shots, right? But the actual rounds that were detected was 1,455 during the middle of December to the end of March. That's a lot, that's a lot of rounds being fired. We've only managed to collect casings, 468 casings, which, you know, for whatever reason, it could be the caliber, it could be the fact that, you know, folks are getting smart because we do use shell casings that we collect. I mean, we we can, we put them through NIBIN, and we are, we are able to to gain some information from those casings that are collected. So the ratio of alerts to evidence collected, so generally, what we are seeing is that when there is a single round, we're not really, we're not going to see any casings being collected, just as if if we have a single round being fired, the likelihood of someone calling 911 for just one shot is less. Now, if you have more than one, people are generally going to call, right? And I think we were seeing about 25% of the ShotSpotter alerts where there was actually a call that was, that was generated to report the actual sound of shots. From that, we had 10 gunshot wounds, and we've recovered three guns and made six arrests. So wanting to talk a little bit about the the gunshot wounds incident, so I wanted to just quickly go down the ShotSpotter alerts that were not sent out to officers, they were mismisclassification. So that means the gunshot was, the gunshot was detected incorrectly, and it was determined, the gunshot was detected, but it was determined by ShotSpotter not to be fire, gunfire. So that's a misclassification. So the first incident, and we will talk about that just because it was such a large incident happened on New Year's Day, the five people were shot at North Miami Boulevard at the subway in in Wellens Village. ShotSpotter staff immediately, very responsive, as no sooner had, you know, Mr. Shees picked up the phone, that they said, yes, let's look at this. And so what they, what they determined after a secondary review was that two, two of those sensors had actually detected the gunshots. Three of the sensors, there's three sensors required to triangulate that. So two, two detected it, the other one, there was not a triangulation that would have actually sent that alert. And so the team, there were 911 calls, as you know, for the shooting. The the ShotSpotter team worked to remedy that and rectify that issue. And and so we have not had a, any type of mismisclassification in that area since then because we have been, or in Wellens Village. So the elapsed time between the time the first 911 call was received, well, between the time that the ShotSpotter sensors actually detected the shot, so they did hear the shot, it just didn't send an alert. To the time that the first unit was dispatched was about two minutes and 22 seconds. Now, we did happen to have officers in the area that heard the shots. So that that certainly does does help with that. The second incident was a homicide that occurred on February 15, February 5, near Juniper Street and Fay Street. So during that time, ShotSpotter detected shots fired during that incident, but, so when a shot is fired, it it, the sensors hear it, that sound or what the sensors hear goes for a secondary review in their review center. That sound is reviewed, and then the alert is then sent. In this case, in this case, the ShotSpotter alert was not sent out. There was a 911 call associated with this particular shooting, and we had to go back and look at the time that it took between the the actual shot coming out to to the time that the first 911 call. And it looked like that the estimated elapsed time was five minutes and five seconds from when police personnel was notified. The third incident was also a homicide. This one was triggered on February 16 in the 800 block of Park Avenue. The ShotSpotter sensor was never triggered for this incident. However, video surveillance did show that we also did share the information with the ShotSpotter team. The crime had occurred at 7:58 AM. The first 911 call was received, the, from the time the first unit was dispatched and the median average time it took for ShotSpotter to put out an alert, about 33 seconds, that the estimated elapsed time would have been about three minutes and nine seconds from when police personnel would have been responded. So there's no way really to know for sure if this person, but they, if they would have, if the time loss would have made a difference in in their survival, there was just no way of knowing that. So we also want to make sure that we're tracking harms. So when we have a ShotSpotter alert, is there being harm done to the community? Meaning, are we getting officers that are going in and behaving in in a reckless manner? Are we causing more harm to the community by having officers respond to these ShotSpotter alerts? So we 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 use two mechanisms. One, making sure that we are looking at any, any types of complaints, whether it's a community concern or complaint coming into professional standards. We have not found any record of any complaint coming in. Also, officers are tasked with ensuring that canvassing is done, flyers with the QR code, as you remember, for the surveys are being distributed. Now, it is completely volunteering. So we may not have, you know, the number of surveys that we had hoped. As a matter of fact, we're not really receiving that much feedback from our community that are, that are, you know, in and around the area of the ShotSpotter alerts. But we certainly are trying, but none of the responses that we see, received back have indicated a dissatisfaction. And so finally, before I close, I do want to mention that May 15 was National Peace Officers Memorial Day. It's a time that we observe officers that are killed or are die in the line of duty. We did, if you drive past headquarters, we did illuminate Durham Police Headquarters in blue. And the reason why this is so important to us, aside from being law enforcement officers and wearing the uniform, is that we have a, the son of one of our fallen officers that works at the Durham Police Department, that is a police officer. And so he walks past his father's memoriam probably every day. So it's important to us to to really lift up that officer and 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 his father, but also all the officers that were lost in the in the line of duty or had a line of duty death. May 14, which is this week, to May the 20th is National Police Week. And so it's important to us that we lift up our officers for the work that they do and for putting their lives on the line to keep our community safe. And so that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I will open it up to questions from my colleagues at this point. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon, sir.
Command staff, that's President, all of the staff. And as always, we ask that you give the men and women under your command our profound gratitude and thanks for racing towards what most of us run from every day. Just a couple of things, Chief. First off, thank you for an excellent sobering report about the state of things in our city. I want to thank you for your excellent presentation on on ShotSpotter and just the transparency. I really cannot say enough with just how transparent and in-depth. There are about 100 American cities that uses technology, and I've talked to a lot of colleagues around the country that have deployed this technology in their cities. I I don't think there's any police department or any administration that has done as much work around transparency and around integration and being fully open and frontal, face-fronting than any city in this country. And I've I've visited, I've looked at other setups. It is just remarkable, the amount of work, so much so that I understand ShotSpotter is actually looking to integrate some of the things we're doing in Durham into their operations and offering it to other cities around the country. So I I cannot just say enough, warts and all, and and this is what we ask for. We ask for, and we promise the people of Durham, full transparency. There's no other pilot that this city has ever engaged in, from A to Z, that has had more scrutiny and more openness and more accessibility to the people of this city than this pilot, none. And ones that we spent far more money on than this one that have had, that have not had this level of scrutiny and openness and accessibility to the public. So I just want to thank you so much and the administration for insulating yourselves from a lot of the noise that was around this pilot and just doing the work and bringing bringing us the numbers, unflinching, without editorial, straight, no chaser. So I just want to congratulate you and the staff. And I know you're going to instantly punt to the staff and the team that you have around you, but but you're the face of it, but I know that you've got a lot of people and to you as well, Madam, Madam Manager, who worked on this and who are continuing to work on it and for just giving us such an excellent presentation and making it available to our residents and citizens. I do want to talk, ask you a question, Chief, about the Crime Area Target Team. And if you would talk a little bit about Durham's use of specialized teams in general, and specifically, there were some media reports that some in our community were concerned about some of the tactics of some of our specialized units, traffic stops, some of our residents and neighbors in McDougal Terrace had talked about incidents where they felt that these teams were being overly aggressive. Some years ago in Durham, we we stopped doing traffic stops for minor traffic, for minor equipment infractions, we stopped checkpoints and things of that nature. So if you would just speak to our people, speak to our residents and citizens about Durham's use of specialized teams and and to some of the concerns that people have raised anecdotally, or if you've documented, and you can certainly bring that up. anecdotally, or if you've documented, and you can certainly bring that up, of, of our Crime Area Target Teams, our specialized teams being aggressive, particularly in neighborhoods, neighborhoods like McDougal Terrace, however you want to respond to those things.
Okay. So I'll start by saying this, you know, our specialized units, we support them wholeheartedly. We are very responsible with the way that we deploy our units, very responsible with the way that we select our, our teammates that, that make up these units, whether it's our selective enforcement team, our, you know, all the way down to CID, any of our specialized units. We want to make sure that, one, we have great leadership in place, because that's key. There is also the air of accountability. We do believe in holding each other accountable. In addition, and in particular with Crime Area Target Team, we did investigate three complaints. And so one, one of those complaints actually came from, it was a community concern, a citizen concern. The other two, we actually initiated, because we had seen a Facebook Live. There was never a formal complaint that actually was registered to us. This exec staff initiated that complaint, and we initiated a secondary complaint. You know, what I always say to our community members is that it's just not enough to broadcast it on social media, because I'm not always going to be on social media, or this team is not always going to be on social media. We have to have a complaint, whether it's you write it down on a scrap sheet of paper and you give it to, you take it to one of the district substations, or you submit it anonymously. We have to be able to have that complaint. Otherwise, we're not able to function in the way that our city, our community expects us to. In this case, the three complaints that we received were against, were on Crime Area Target Team. We did a thorough investigation, and we made personnel changes on our team. So, so we are walking, walking the talk, and that I know to be factual.
Well, thank you for that, Chief. And I know many folk in the city wanted to hear from you about that, and I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that. One other question. Under what circumstances would a Crime Area Target Team do a, do a traffic stop? What has to arouse their attention? Is it?
Yeah. So it's any violation of North Carolina General Statute by which we are sworn, and by statute, right? So it could be anything from a vehicle registration, a license plate or tag expired. It could be tent, it could be window tent, it could be all the way up to a tip that they receive from a confidential informant. So it could be a whole array of those, and everything in between. So Crime Area Target Team is, is a citywide team. They do function citywide. When they are not answering 911 calls for service, which it seems like they've been doing a lot of lately, they are supplementing and assisting our gang units, they're doing a lot of surveillance, because that's really where we need the most assistance. But yes, any traffic stop, just, just as I went out and made a traffic stop for a tent, someone's tent that was too dark, I couldn't see in the car in the daylight, that, that's a safety issue. And so, you know, I made the traffic stop. So that's, that's what they would stop the car for.
And are these marked units, or all of them?
Yes, they, 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 they wear uniforms, the standard Durham Police Department uniform, and they are in marked units, yes.
Thank you so much, Chief. I appreciate it. Thank you all for your command staff and all of your staff. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments from colleagues? Right. Well, Chief, once again, I am compelled to tell you how proud I am of the Durham Police Department and the fine work that it does. I have had the opportunity to watch you all all my life, and have been, I had the opportunity to judge you all for 24 years of that life. And I appreciate all that you do and continue to do on your staff. We count on you all to, to, to do the things, as Mayor Pro Tim said, that most of, most of us would never think about doing. So we congratulate you for all the work that you're doing for maintaining safety in our city to the best that you can humanly possible. And I hope that this week, where we celebrate you all, will be one that you all will take time to celebrate yourselves and your families, because it's not just you all that go to work every day and put on that uniform, it's also your families. And so we appreciate the sacrifice.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. Have, have we entertained, first of all, hello, Chief, how are you and?
Good, sir.
And team? Have we entertained the idea, or have you all thought about the idea of the other cities that are suing Hyundai and Kia? Baltimore just came out with an article that they're suing along, joining other cities for suing them for, what is it? There, there's a significant uptick in Hyundai's and Kia's that are actually, they, they're just being broken into. And I see we have the same exact two brands. For the record, this is not a proposition, but I was just wondering if those conversations were happening.
No, I, I will, I will just say that I would not dare put that on city attorneys, because they like me. But no, I, we have, I have not personally broached that conversation with, with any of city staff.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we move to our last report, presentation this afternoon, and this is internal to us, item number 34, FY 2022-23 Third Quarter Financial Report. We will turn it over to our staff.
I am Tim Flora. I am your Finance Director, here to give you the third quarter financial report, just to make this clear from the Chief, who just gave you the quarter one. The third quarter is on a fiscal year, and the Chief gave you a first quarter for the calendar year. So for our residents, I wanted to make sure there was no confusion there. This presentation is on our financial condition as of March the 31st of this year. And this information can be found on our website. This is, I'm going to give you a high-level summary of the 47-page report that we have compiled, and so I would recommend to our residents, for more information, that they can go on the website and get that information. I will also say that this is a joint effort between the Finance and Budget Departments, and so I very much appreciate the support of our budget friends, and especially, I would like to give a shout out and my, my appreciation to Interim Director Christina Riordan for these past couple of months, which has been a pretty significant lift on her part. And so I just wanted to say how very much I appreciate her efforts in this. We will start with the General Fund. As you know, that is the main operating fund of the city. We have a $275.5 million expenditure budget, and as we will show here in the next couple of slides, we will show that we, while the, the expenditure budget is $275.5 million, we are expecting to spend about $265.7 million, which we under-budgeted by about $9.8 million. This slide here is just the first half of our departments, departments that we have as part of that budget. And the next slide is the other half of our departments. I'm happy to report that we are anticipating all of our departments to be under-budgeted this year, so that, that is good. I will say that a big chunk of that being under-budget is, so we're looking at about $9.76 million worth of savings from expenditures, and of that, the biggest part of that is $7.5 million from vacancies, vacant positions, and about 1.9, almost $2 million from operating savings. That's just information I've already given to you. When we look at our, when we look at our revenues, our revenue budget is about $248 million. Revenues will be coming in a little bit higher than what we are anticipating. We're expected to receive about $259.1 million, which is about $11.1 million more than we had anticipated. I'll talk about, I will talk about the top two revenue items, which are property taxes. And you can see here that in 2023, we're expected to receive about $122.3 million, which is about 3.7% over last year. And, and you can see, I've got three years of information there, that, well, that's actually, the $122.3 million is what we collected so far, which is about 97% of what we are anticipating to collect, and which is pretty standard for what we have received in the last few years. We usually get about 97% about this time, and by the time we get to the end of the year, we, we should have collected about almost 100%, 99.8% is what we had last year. Sales tax, just point out again that these numbers are what we've received through March 31. We are budgeted, we budgeted to receive about $86.8 million, but we expect it to receive $97.5 million. Again, the lion's share of that 11-plus million dollars of over-budgeted revenue is coming from the sales tax. I will say that sales tax is our most volatile revenue stream, but we have been fortunate here at the city because of growth and just the economy that we've been seeing, some really good numbers with our sales tax. But we are anticipating to end the year with about $10.7 million over-budget. Some of our other revenue streams, you know, so $11.1 million is what we're over-budget. Again, the big chunk of that looks like sales tax, our property taxes are on, are on target. Our utility franchise taxes are about $1.4 million under-budget, but that has been consistent with the, the last few years. It's, that's how it's been trending, and I think we're making those adjustments in the budget moving forward. Charges for services, we're looking at $150,000 over-budget. And occupancy tax, we have a pretty strong recovery, and we're looking at $938,000 over-budget. A very familiar chart that you've seen many times before, just comparing year over year. Again, no big surprises here. It's pretty, pretty standard, pretty routine, and just the, the one thing I'd point out, even if we put the year prior and the year prior before that, you would just see a steady growth in all of those categories, a year over year, so that is good. Fund balance projected, won't spend a whole lot of time on this, but we are projected to have a fund balance in year of about $77 million, which is good. Our required level for that is about $42.9 million. I will just point out that fund balance is one of, what we use to help manage our cash flow. So while you may think that's a big number, we like to have that buffer, because as we move into the new fiscal year, that is the time of year when we start really spending a lot of our money until our coffers get regenerated in January with the receipt of the majority of our property taxes. We will move into our enterprise funds. Water and Sewer Fund is the city's second-largest fund, has a $127.6 million expenditure budget. We are looking at a positive budget variance of about $1.8 million. Personnel Services, again, is a, a big chunk of that being under-budgeted due to vacancies. But operating expenditures are, let's see, that is the revenues, let's get to the, operating expenditures are anticipated to be a little bit over-budgeted by about $300,000, and that's mostly due to the cost of chemicals that I think you've heard about a number of times. No real surprises in the water, water fund. The Transit Operating Fund, positive budget variance of about $2.5 million. Just to point out, that this fund is supported by both state and federal funding grants that we have, to the tune of about $15.4 million, as well as three and three-quarter cents of, of the tax rate. We do not charge fees for, for fares any longer, but we are also, we're looking at a positive budget variance of about $2.5 million. Operating expenditures are projected to be under-budgeted, but a lot of that is just because of the shortage of drivers and the fewer routes that we're able to accommodate. And these are just the numbers. Solid Waste Fund, our operating revenues are slightly over-budget. However, we are, at this point, as of, end of the third quarter, we are projected to be over-budget in our operating, operating expenditures and our Personnel Services. This has been, this actually is being adjusted in this agenda cycle with a budget amendment to fix that. The operating expenditures are projected to be over, mostly due to added costs related to fuel. And this is a situation where for Personnel Services, where staffing is an issue, because we have to continue to run those routes, and when you have a staff shortage, temp services are more expensive, as is now you're paying staff to work and paying them overtime at time and a half. And so that is the reason why those are over, over-budget. But we were able to cover that through the budget amendment, and that will be covered by the Solid Waste Fund's fund balance. And these are those numbers. Stormwater, not a big story to tell there. Everything is pretty much on track. Revenues are going to be a little bit over budgets, over-budget, expenditures under-budget for a positive budget variance of about $341,000. Here's their activity. I will just point out in this that while it looks like there might be a negative net revenue, we do shift money from this fund to the Capital Fund, from their fund balance for capital projects. Our Parking Fund, operating revenues are up. As you all are aware, last year, we increased our fees for the parking decks, that's generated some revenue, additional revenue, but we are projected to be $614,000 over-budget. Our expenditures are slightly under-budget. I will also point out for this fund, that this is a fund where we do subsidize from the General Fund, the, the capital projects, so the debt service for the Parking Fund is, is being paid for out of the Debt Service Fund. And I will also, just also point out just briefly, that the revenues for the last number of years have been insufficient to cover all of the expenses, and so this does leave this fund with a negative cash deficit, although I will say that it is less of an impact this year as it was in the prior year, so at least we're trending in the, the right direction. So we'll go through those, and then just briefly, the other funds, Ballpark Fund, DEPAK Fund, and Inspection Funds, really right on target with where, where we want to be, and just point out that for the DEPAK Fund, there is an overall positive budget variance of about $1.1 million. So we're, we're very glad to see that. And with that, that is my quick presentation on Q3 financials, and more than happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Flor. Any questions? Councilman Williams?
It's safe to say that we are fiscally healthy.
I always, yeah, we're solid, yes.
I like, I like that, too. Thank you for your leadership, Madam Manager.
It's a good thing to be able to smile about money. And, you know, I, I keep thinking about being at the event on yesterday, and, you know, you all didn't have an opportunity to slow down or stop. City never closes. It's always, and you're right in the middle of budget season. I don't know that we can say thank you enough adequately. I just don't know that we'll be able to do that. We're just going to try to be fiscally responsible, too, as you have been.
And I will say, I appreciate the, the leadership of Council. Certainly, with your direction, we have crafted some pretty solid policies. Certainly, with your direction, we have crafted some pretty solid policies, and certainly the leadership of the City Manager and the deputy city managers on keeping us on task. We very much appreciate that.
Job well done. Thank you all. Thank you all so much. All right, Madam Manager, we are down at, well, actually, it's time for me to turn it over to Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and council members. I will go through the report. I'll name the board first, and then your nominees. The Citizen Advisory Committee appointments, there were two vacancies, and council has nominated Alicia Curry and Maura Gerard. Workforce Development Board, representing Durham Public Schools, Julie A. Pack. Durham Open Space and Trails Commission appointment, for the at-large position, there were three vacancies, Shakira Campbell, Stephen A. Cohen, Melissa Southern. The Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board appointment, for the position of at-large resident, is Julie N. Malavade. Human Relation Commission appointment, for the category representing one Caucasian, non-Hispanic person, is John J. Hoffman. For the Durham Sports Commission appointment, Angelique Stallings. And the final one is the Durham Cultural Advisory Board appointment, for a general position, is Margaret E. McNabb. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll now turn to our city managers to settle our agenda.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, for consent, we have items 1 through 32, and GBA Public Hearings, items 36 through 40. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to settle our agenda.
Second.
The move by Councilwoman Cabeara, and seconded by Councilman Williams. For all those in favor, would you sign by aye?
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, that motion is carried unanimously, and I believe you all, we're going to be out of here at 4:50. We are adjourning at 4:50 on May the 18th, 2023. Bull City Strong.